That's what she looks like. I was looking her up to see what she looked like.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome. Yes, everyone's in.
Okay. All right. Tim, are you still there? We might have lost him.
Come back, had to come back in, and so I don't know what happened. So Jackie, are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, all right, Jeff, we're all set?
All set.
Okay, so, um, we called the Eastline Board of Education meeting for February 8th, 2021 to order at 5:00, 5 o'clock, and we immediately went into executive session for the purpose of discussion of a personnel matter. We've come out of executive session now, and we are ready to continue with our meeting agenda, and the first item up on the agenda is public comment. And we talked, Jeff and I, we reviewed, went through, I went through all of the public comments. We received nineteen public written comments, and they are posted on Board Doc and for all of the board members as well as the public to, to see. And there are about seventeen pages of, of comments. So it's very difficult and I, for us to read all of those. And I think that what's most important is that board members read, individually read all of the input that we've received from the public. And, and as we go through our, actually through our agenda this evening, all the comments are related to topics that are on the agenda. Just to summarize real quickly, what, what we did receive, we received one comment on our, on the planetarium minute meetings, the meeting minutes. And just for a correction on that, we received three comments concerning our budget, the superintendent's budget recommendations to the board, and they were basically opposed to any budgetary increase. That was, so there were three comments on, on that. There were three comments concerning the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that we have ongoing, in particularly actions related and things with respect to the elementary school. So there were three comments on that. They were more concerns and in terms of, of why are you doing this? Is this really appropriate? What age levels is that, is that appropriate at? And then finally, there were ten comments, very, very, actually, all the comments were very, very well-written and very clear, very easy to understand. Ten comments related to reopening the schools as soon as possible and as safely as possible, but, but we need to get the kids back into schools. And many of the comments had cited concerns about the social emotional welfare of, of the children being not fully in school. There were three comments, finally, that basically said, please do not change at this point. Do not reopen the schools for full in-person learning and wait until next fall and do it then. So that's, that was it. So we had, there were nineteen comments. One person actually had comments on two top, two of the topics. So when I went through, there were twenty topics that were, were included. I, I definitely, I definitely encourage if board members haven't had a chance to read through them, really, we, we need to really look at the inputs. They were all very, very well-written and very clear to understand. It's so important. And I want to just also just thank the folks that did take the time to give us input on all of those important topics. And it's, and I'm sure it will, it will, the board members will certainly take the information into consideration very seriously. So with that, we'll move on then to the next agenda topic, which is the approval of our minutes for the January 25th, 2021 board meeting. It was a regularly scheduled meeting. So would
I would like to make a motion, Jamie, to approve the minutes of the January 25th regular Board of Education meeting.
And so second.
Okay, that was a second from Candace, I think. Any corrections to those minutes? Any modifications? Okay, no, seen them? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. All right. Does anybody oppose? Does anybody want to abstain? Okay, I think the minutes passed, so we're all set with that. We'll move on then to our special reports. We do not have a Board of Selectmen representative this evening, that's my understanding. We do have our state representative, Holly Cheeseman, and Jeff, is she, has she popped on?
She has.
There she is.
Thank you. Technical problems, but thank you for sending me the link. I was online, jumping off to this one, and it never goes as smoothly as one wants. And if I have to jump up in a minute to let the dogs out, you'll forgive me. Here, I'm going to let the dogs out. Hang on.
Well, Holly's doing that. We just wanted to provide an opportunity for her to come and give an update as our representative. That's what's going on at the Capitol. And, you know, we're here to answer any questions.
All right. Sorry, our, our HR person at the Capitol reminds us that during these virtual times, we all must practice kindness. So I thank you for practicing kindness. It's wonderful to be here. I wish we could be in person, God willing, not too long. The governor issued a press release today for citizens, residents over sixty-five will be able to start registering for the vaccine on the eleventh. So that's great news. The information will be up on my website, and obviously, if you go to the governor's webpage, it's there. Anyway, if you can ignore the woofing in the background, I was just wanted to provide an update on the funding for the state's, apologies. Of course, the people decide to drive around my, my driveway. The second round, I guess, of CARES Act funding, which is the S R one and two, I guess we received seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Is that right, Jeff? And the state has actually received a total of six hundred and three million in S R one and two funds and applications. It's going to be distributed to the different LEAs based on Title I funding. The applications are going to be opening on February 22nd, and they'll be based on your needs as a result of the pandemic, steps you're going to take to address those different needs and how you intend to roll that out. So I presume you're getting all this information, Jeff?
Yes, yep, we're in the beginning stages of gathering that. I'm receiving it.
Okay, the other thing I, you know, I've been receiving a lot of emails and calls from parents, and one of their big concerns is the mental health of their children during the pandemic. They've seen, you know, some who seem to be coping well in the beginning are now, really seem to be spiraling downward. And I know, Jeff, you said you'd seen a real increase in the number of referrals. And I know, looking at the leg, the legislative priorities of the Education Committee going forward, they are very focused on that social and emotional learning piece and providing resources to the districts to address that. I know there's a real desire for you to be able to use some of these funds to address the learning gaps that are going to inevitably result even in a town like Eastline with a lot of resources. You can imagine in, you know, are less well-served communities, that the needs are going to be even greater. There will be, so we're, we're looking ideally with the federal dollars coming into the state to be used to address these, God willing, shorter-term needs. I mean, the perfect use for this one-time revenue is to support these, as I say, what I hope are short-term needs, not to fill holes in the budget, not to develop new programming, but to give you here in Eastline and the other towns, the resources you need to support your staff, to bring in extra professionals if you need to, to provide that supplemental learning over the summer, to do whatever you have to do once we get back to some sort of ideally normal learning environment, to address those gaps that are inevitably going to result, and to provide the mental health, the spiritual health support for your, the children and the staff and everybody in the system, because this has been such an unprecedented blow to the way you conduct yourselves, to the way our children conduct ourselves. So I think we need to, going forward, use the, the federal money that comes in in the best possible way to address those needs. There are a couple of bills out there that I think will be problematic. There is, again, a call for regionalization. There are some calls looking at adjusting funding to towns based on their grant list. Obviously, any cut to municipal budgets, even on the government's side, will play out as far as how you fund the Board of Ed. And I do think, as I say, and particularly looking at the mental health of our, our children in schools, and I know everyone's bending over backwards, we have to be very sensitive when we're presenting curriculum, to do it in a way that's respectful, that honors what we're trying to teach, but also bears in mind that our children are very vulnerable, very fragile now, and we must bear that in mind. So with that, I've talked far too much, and thank you for ignoring the dogs. It's, does anybody have any quests, specific questions? And obviously, if I can't answer them, I'll, I'm happy to get back to you.
Holly, I do, because I know we, it's Jamie.
Okay.
We've talked in the past about this. Is there any way that the governor is going to change his mind about putting teachers forward for the vaccine sooner rather than later?
You know, Jamie, I wish I could give you an affirmative yes. Our caucus wrote to him early in January to say, please, can we, can we do this? Because one of the most important things is to be able to get those kids back in school. And if the teachers are vaccinated and feel confident we can accomplish that sooner rather than later. Unfortunately, as you know, the executive order was extended until April 20th. And we, you know, and this is not a partisan issue, we as legislators have had very little ability to influence how this is played out. And I hear this from you in the school districts, I hear it from the businesses going forward. Decisions are made, announcements are made without consulting, you know, what should be a co-equal branch of government. I think the only thing that would change that, as I know, Astrid Zanich and I believe Johnson and Johnson have applied for their emergency use authorization, if all of a sudden we had doubled the number of vaccines and we had more in the pipeline. And the other thing may be, as the, you know, if they find fewer people uptake, because the DPH is monitoring unused vac, making sure all the doses are used, it may speed up that process. But I'm trying, believe me, I am, we are advocating with the governor's office, as I say, we wrote him early in January to include teachers in that, that if not the first group, the second group. But if it changes, I'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Holly.
Holly, this is Jill, I have a question. May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yep.
Holly, I was just, I've been thinking, I agree with Jamie. I really think it's a shame that the teachers have been put, you know, had been put so far down the list to get their vaccinations. So my question, my question is, is there a way, I don't know who, as I think this through, who our health director of alleged like reports to, I mean, who commands what he does?
He would report to the Department of Public Health.
So in essence, the Department of Health could help him override that if he wanted to give the vaccines.
No, no, you have to, you, you are not allowed to go outside the protocol. Now, I, I don't think we'll be like in New York where you'll be fined, but theoretically, as we've seen with people showing up who were not supposed to get vaccines, if they discover you are not in the protocol, you will be turned away.
Okay, what about, have you heard anything about vaccine surfing, where you go?
People call and find vaccines. And, you know, as much as I want the teachers to be vaccinated, I also know that looking at the, I mean, I get, I get the numbers every day, Jill. And if you look at where we're seeing the deaths, not necessarily the cases, but the hospitalizations and deaths, it's eighty percent or over sixty-five.
And I realize that, but my question is, I'm more concerned. Talk, we've just been talking about the mental health.
Oh, I agree.
I'm worried about the mental health of the teachers. I really feel very strongly about this, because I know, I understand their anxiety.
Yeah, I wish I could give you, you know, we're going to get them in, but until, I think it's a question of increasing the number of available doses. Once we get more vaccines in the system, you're going to work through that sixty-five and over group much more quickly, and you'll be able to get everybody else sorted.
Okay, I just, so, I mean, I'm going to continue to think of ways to work around this. I just think it's incredible, incredibly silly in my, you know, my personal opinion.
Oh, I, I, as I said, my, we wrote a letter to the governor early on in January saying, please include teachers in 1B, and it unfortunately fell on the pier. So, again, apologies for the woofing.
Yeah, that is quite strange. I will give you that.
Anybody else have a question for Holly? Okay, all right, seeing that. Holly, thanks so much for joining us, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again.
Okay, please, and any questions, Tim, never, never hesitate to reach out. I'll get answers if I can, and thank you. And I'm going to leave you to go back to my other meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alex.
So we can move now to our Eastline High School student representatives. I do see Sachi and I saw Grace. There she is. Okay, hi.
Hi, um, I'll start out with something that's been a big, like, topic of discussion at the high school, mostly today, just about that the College Board recently changed the, like, sent out the finalized AP dates for the testing. So there's, they were talking about the three possible dates for the testing. One is all in person from May 3rd to the seventeenth. One is half in person and half online from May 18th to the 28th. And then the latest is a mixed as well, half in person, half online from June 1st to 11th. And I know that a lot of the students have been talking about, and a lot of the teachers have been talking about how it'd be nice to be able to take it a little bit later and having that extra time for either review or finishing up teaching of the content, especially with the Wednesdays, having, missing a class on a Wednesday, like, and missing a full class, like, every two weeks due to the Wednesdays compared to a typical year, it would make it a little bit easier for us to be able to have a little bit either more review time or a little bit more time to teach all the content. But I know that a lot of the kids and teachers also want to get them over with and done before it gets too late in the year. So I think that a lot of the students and teachers from the feedback that I've heard today in school have been leaning towards the one in the middle. That's just something that has been a big topic of discussion recently. In addition to that, the National Honor Society had to cancel their carnations for selling for Valentine's Day due to the snow days. But despite that, a lot of the service clubs have been able to do a bunch of other service activities. For example, National Honor Society just did a beach cleanup, and the Spanish Honor Society has adopted a family in December. They did that for service. And the full Senate has also been working on proposals. They were, they were just finished working on a proposal for Spirit Week with Ms. Jenkins that was presented for COVID Safe Spirit Week. And with that, we were thinking about possibly selling masks as well, just as an idea for, instead of doing Causes Day, we're going to sell masks for a cause in the community. And I know that, that Ms. Jenkins had talked to Ms. Kelly about that as well, and about just having a COVID Safe Spirit Week to add some more fun to this year while keeping everyone safe. So that's something that has been, have some things that have been happening, and I know Sachi has a little bit more.
Hi, so just an overview on sports. So far, so good. Everyone is keeping up their protocols. But unfortunately, the girls' basketball team is out due to some positive COVID cases, but we will be returning to practices on this Friday. So we were supposed to have our first game Friday, but that was now postponed. The boys' team had their first scrimmage against Waterford today. I believe they are still playing. And track and field for both boys and girls seems to be running really smoothly, following all of their protocols and such. For club times, the change seems to be working well for many students, because now they don't have to choose between visiting office hours and going to club meetings. And the students seem to enjoy their snow days and were able to have some normalcy to this unprecedented year. So that was really exciting.
Good. Excellent. Any questions for high school representatives? I don't see any. Wow. Okay. Well, thanks a lot, girls. It was very helpful. Eric?
Go ahead. So, yeah, sorry. There's, there's so many people on, it's hard to even see, see anyone. So maybe for Deb, I had mentioned it, I asked last time, I just, so we are streaming different events? Are we doing band concerts, plays, sporting events? And if there is, can we figure out how to communicate broadly, not only to the kind of current parents of high school students, but former, well, I'm still parent, parent of former high school students? I guess that's, but I still have interest. I'd like to watch some of the stuff. I know there's others who are like me, who may not even be in high school yet, might not have kids in high school, but still like watching some of the high school events. So if we can communicate that, that would be great.
We are streaming from the gym and the pool. I know for sure. We did stream the play. There had, the concerts have been all virtual, and they've been posted. And so, yeah, I'll look, it's easy to send it out to current students. We'll have to think a little bit about how to send it out to a broader community beyond social media. Most of it has been posted on social media.
Okay, maybe we can post it also on the website.
The website.
Eastline website or something like that, at least.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good idea.
Good, good. Okay, Kate?
Sasha and I've got the other name. What reports do you have on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then also on mental health? Those are the two recurring themes. If you could just give us a quick update on those two topics, please?
So I think that for mental health, a lot of the students have been able to kind of, kind of get a little bit more used to this COVID environment and doing online schooling. I think that students are, have been utilizing the resources at the school and the guidance counselors through Zoom as well. So I know for myself, I've seen my counselor just for help for college applications and everything, and it's pretty easy just to set up a Zoom call or to visit their office the days that you are in school. So I think a lot of the students have been, if they've been struggling with mental health, have been able to use these resources as well and have been able to start coping a little bit more with just this whole, this whole year. And in addition to that, I think that for diversity and inclusion, I think that a lot of the students have, especially after we just had the Viking Saga article about the new class that was going to come to the high school, I think that a lot of the students are really for inclusion and are being advocates for it. And I think that, especially with that article, just demonstrates how much the kids appreciate the new class and how much kids do think about this. So I think that overall, kids are just really wanting to include everybody and thinking about on a deeper level as well. So overall, that's what I've been seeing at the high school. I'm not sure if Sachi has observed anything else.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything to add, Sachi?
Um, no, I totally agree with what Grace was saying in the fact that I do think everyone is starting to come together more and realize that there's stuff bigger than just high school. And this year has just changed everyone into a whole different level. So I think that it really is just bringing everyone together. I don't think it's having that much of a negative impact on everyone, which is really important. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Very well said. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. As always, really very, very good. That brings us into our discussion action items for the evening. And I just, just a comment, and I'm, and I'm, Jeff and I really spent a lot of time debating the length of the, of the topics. So I, I, it's, while I think we need to make sure we have good, robust conversation on all of the, all of the things and, and really allow it to occur. On the other hand, I think we need to be, be a little bit careful on our time as well. So, so with that, we'll dive, dive right in. Our first topic that's up for discussion is an update on the Eastline Public Schools 2021 COVID-19 update phased and phased in return for the elementary school. So Jeff, I'll turn that right over to you.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. And we'll kind of keep, be cognizant of the, of the time as well. I know we've got a lot of agenda items. So I'm going to share my screen. Let me pull it up now. So we're going to go through a couple of slides, so everybody can take a look at some of this information. Everybody see that? Okay. Before I, okay, I'm going to close out my window. I'm not going to be able to see anybody's face. So hopefully that remains in place. Couple pieces as we talk about elementary reopening, you know, the planning and timeline of this. Number one, there's, there's no right answer in this. We all want, you know, our kids back, bottom line. There are such, in this, we've been saying this since the pandemic started, there are such mixed views, and I hear it from one side, you know, don't do this, leave us as we are, to the other side of, you know, bring our kids back now. And that's been the message that we've heard all year long. And we are smack dab right in the middle of that. In any decision that we're going to make and any planning that we're doing, it's going to be about safety first. It has to be. That's our single most important piece in all of this. Hence, why, you know, we're looking at a phased-in timeline with this, to do this in a safe and a systematic manner. You know, we have two hundred and seventeen elementary employees, and I think, you know, there's a lot of voices and a lot of feelings in that. I had shared the padlet that we had did, that we'd done with the elementary staff and gathered all their feedback. So all the board members had seen that. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at that feedback, as to, you know, some of their concerns, their hopes, their needs for PPE. And, and many are excited, too, about trying to get kids back. So it's a, it's a mixed review. But we have two hundred and seventeen staff that, you know, we need to understand. They go home to loved ones every day. They go home to an elderly mother or father or a spouse that might be, you know, of age or have health conditions. So we want to just, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that in some of the slides in just a second. And then I just want to reiterate, too, you know, from the start of this pandemic as well, you know, the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Gardona, had said from the get-go on in writing that, you know, these decisions really need to be between the superintendent and the local health department, because we have all the information, facts, and we're balancing, you know, all that out. So with that being said, let's run through some of these, these slides. Let's first talk about the metrics and why, you know, we're looking to move in the direction of phasing our kids back in. The COVID positivity rate, as many of you are aware, yeah, across the state as well as across southeastern Connecticut, it's down. As of the end of last week, it was in, down to three point seven seven. It was up in the sixes previous to that. We always talked about the trend data and looking at at least two weeks of decreases in cases, COVID-19 cases in our area. Well, that has happened. You can see, this comes directly from Ledge Light, Ledge Light residents, it decreased from on January 16th. There was eight hundred and four cases reported, one twenty-three, six hundred and ten, and then on one thirty, four hundred and sixty-seven. So we have that trend going in the direction that we said when we see that, we would begin that process of work to bring our, our kids back. So we have that trend going in the direction that we said when we see that, we would begin that process of work to bring our, our kids back. The Ledge Light Health Director, as well as our medical advisor, you know, they are in full support in my conversations with them of a phased in approach to running, returning elementary students. Not a full in, bring them all back right now approach, they are in support of a phased in approach. And I was clear with them on, on that and having their support in order to move forward. We have watched, you know, our preschool students do very well, they have been, you know, four days a week since August. Team Davis and the preschool teams have done a great job, you know, with that. So they've, they've done very well and we want to use that as a point of, of reference. And our mitigation strategies, you know, all the PP, the mask wearing especially, the Plexiglas that we do have in place, it's been effective, you know, within our schools, although we have had 160 cases that are relative to the district. And I'll share a little bit of data on that in a minute, our strategies have been, have been effective. So there's a metrics as to, you know, why are we talking about phasing and bringing our kids back? Let's talk about the trends. So concerns are peaking and Representative Cheeseman mentioned, you know, referrals. You know, concerns are peaking regarding the mental, mental health as well, that we, we all have concerns about our students, both their mental health and their academic issues that, you know, are starting, you know, to come forth in our children. We know that, we see that. We're receiving, you know, recommendations from faculty and from administration about looking to see if they meet the criteria for coming four days a week. And we have set in standard criteria to allow that to happen for students. We've had that high number of parents who are requesting their students attend four days a week for various reasons. And as you just mentioned, you were referrals, a significant spike, you know, in referrals to special education as well as, you know, 504s have, have been taking place, which is never taxing our, our staff in the schools. So additional considerations and, and things that we really need to, to kind of be thinking about through this. You know, we met with our elementary staff last week and it's important to provide, you know, them as much advanced notice, you know, and, and planning opportunities in, in a return and bringing students back. Hence, you know, the, the bringing a phased in approach, you know, starting with March first. There's a number of logistics, you know, that fall into this and each of the schools is working through those logistical plans. There are children and there are staff who are fearful, you know, of a full return. We've heard that as well. Hence, you know, a, a gradual approach to trying to bring them, you know, back, bring students back into the buildings, it supports all. I know that, you know, this half over here wants all its kids back right now, bring them all back. The other half, you know, very scared about that. So a gradual approach supports in allowing us to reengage students who are fearful of four days a week as, as well as staff who are fearful of that, in that gradual approach of re-institute and bringing the buildings back up to full capacity. Administration's working with individual staff to address concerns, you know, related to, you know, all of the safety and health protocols. You know, we need to be ordering more PPE Plexiglas, we're in the process of doing that. That takes a little bit of time, what we need, how many for this classroom? And, and also looking at, you know, class sizes is another component of this too. You're going to have class sizes when we bring students back of, some classes will have 20 and others will have, you know, much less. So we need to be looking at a class full of 20 students now. And I know some will say, look, other districts are doing that, yeah, they are. And it, it varies in the degree of, you know, how successful they've been or, or have not been and what they have for classroom size, et cetera. So, you know, we, we need to be prepared to be talking about that and what we might need to do to support our teachers with larger class sizes. Very important point, the virtual Viking program, it's going to remain an instructional pathway at the elementary level for the rest of the year, we're not going to change it. Remember, it's its own program, it has its own teachers. So if, you know, individuals want to switch or not come back, you know, they would have to go to that virtual Viking program and, and change teachers. So that's an important piece, that's been a very successful program, it's done a great job. And the teachers have really taken off this year, hence we're going to leave it in place. And then cohorting requests, Amy, just, can you just speak for a second? How many cohort changes and requests have we had so far this year? Want to just put out that number?
Across the district as of right now, we've had 1,218 we have made since the start of the year.
So an extremely high number of, of cohort requests, you know, and changes. And, you know, it's, it all wraps into the logistics, you know, and the work that, that we're doing. We have to also be bringing back and swapping out furniture, adding more furniture to classrooms. You know, are we going to be, this is what we're working through as well, and this is why we need that gap in time through the month of February. You know, are we going to be having our special area teachers, for instance, moving in to teach, you know, music, art in the classroom? To really try and maintain those cohorts, are we going to allow students, once they're back in, to still go out into the special areas? And cafeteria, are we going to have the meeting in cafeteria, or are we going to have the meeting in classrooms? It's done differently across districts. So just all logistical components that we are, we're working through. I mentioned earlier, the total number of cases, I'm sorry, I had, I said 160, we're up to 164, we had a few more today as of 2/8. So total cases across the district, you know, 164 associated with our schools. Majority of them are, are students. At the elementary level between Flannery's, Libby Haynes, and Anick Center, there's been 60, 60 total cases. Now, we, we need to be cautious and, and again, safety is paramount. Now, if we reinstitute and bring back, you know, all of our students, again, do we jeopardize the potential issue of, you know, having a high number of cases, high number of quarantining, that would cause us to go remote. And I'm not saying, you know, the transmissions may or may not take place in the schools, but, or in the classrooms, but I can't say that they haven't either. So that's a concern as well, we do not want to come back in full and then have having to go remote. That's the last thing we want to have happen, we need our kids in person. Hence, another rationale and reason for trying to phase this in. So just to give you a snapshot and update on the total number of cases. So let's talk about some action steps and then we'll look at what we're going to be doing for the phase in timeline. So our first action step would be, you know, to reopen four days a week. We would eliminate the hybrid model, cohort A, cohort B would be gone. And we would temporarily hold on to the Wednesday remote work day. So why hold on to the Wednesday remote work day? Well, if we do need to go fully remote for any period of time, schools will be familiar with it, teachers will be familiar with it, students will be familiar with it. So we can maintain that and make sure that that's in play for a period of time. And we're, we would be eliminating that a little bit down the road, and we'll show you that date, temporary date where we're looking at. You know, utilizing, you know, that phased in approach to allow for ongoing monitoring of COVID numbers, you know, we don't know, you know, what the variant strains are going to do. That's an important piece in all this, and we keep hearing from the top epidemiologists at the state that the variant strains are going to cause the numbers to skyrocket again in March potentially. So I, I think by, you know, phasing this in and as other districts around us are talking about the exact same plan, you know, that we're looking at of phasing students back in, that's an important and key element. You know, if we get moving through this and we start to have major issues, we can halt, but we can leave, you know, the, the, the grade levels that we have in, we can leave them in, but we would pause and then wait for the numbers to come back down. And again, safety comes first. The vaccine, you know, we, I can't sit here and say that, you know, staff are going to be vaccinated and teachers are going to be vaccinated on a certain date, you know, we just were talking about it earlier. I would love and, and it would be great, you know, to have all of our teachers vaccinated, it would take so much pressure off of us to be able to bring students, I think, back, you know, even sooner. We don't know when that's going to happen, we're hopeful, we've been told, into February, you know, sometime in, in early March. Hence, we tried to wrap the phase in timeframe around the month of March, when vaccinations hopefully will be taking place. Will it happen? We just, we don't know for sure. We're going to be, I've got a lot of questions about surveying parents and gaining feedback, absolutely. You know, the survey's already been developed, we developed it last week, it's going out probably tomorrow or at the latest Wednesday, and we'll look to close that out on Friday, the 12th. We need to know, you know, how many parents, you know, plan to send, you know, their children back in this four-day-a-week model to start. Need to know what that's going to do to class sizes, are there going to be virtual liking students that potentially, you know, might want to come back knowing that, you know, we're going to be four days a week? So those numbers are extremely important, we need some time to collect that data and make sure that, you know, we support our teachers and everyone in the classroom with what their final class size, you know, might look like. And then I mentioned the Plexiglas before, you know, we, we have to order that additional PPE that's being requested, you know, will be requested by the building principals. So they're in the process of talking with their staff to see what, what they're going to need. And that order will be placed, it's a two-week turnaround. And we'll have those components for classrooms, classroom desks, you know, the shields as well as potentially, you know, continuing to maintain those, you know, in the cafeteria as well as our special areas classrooms too. So let's look at the timeline, and again, you know, we had some party discussions at central office with our principals and got their feedback on this and really thinking about, you know, that gradual, you know, approach and making sure that we're supporting all students and all staff. You know, mentioned pre-k, they've been in, you know, since the start of the year, four days a week. So kindergarten, we'd look to bring back, you know, March 1st. First grade, and two weeks later, March 15th, and grade two, March 29th. And then grade three and four, you know, April 19th, right after that, April vacation. In the midst of this too, I just want to reference, we started some discussions with Mr. Bitgood. And we're looking at a timeline for middle school as well and wrapping middle school into some of these, these potential timelines as well to bring, you know, those students back. May 3rd, the four-day would be gone, we would be back to a full return or a full five-day-a-week in-person setup, normal school experience. So kids would have roughly eight full weeks to be able to be in that experience of the normal school routine. They would leave us feeling that way, it's going to be that much better for them and easier for them to return after the summer, knowing how they left and a full school experience. So with that, that's the last slide, I'm going to stop sharing there. You know, again, we've had a lot of conversations with our elementary principals, we got a lot of good feedback, you know, from our teaching staff and noting their concerns, noting their feelings, noting the positives as well. You know, our three elementary principals are here, Mr. Bitgood's here, we can open it up to have some, some more discussion about this. But this is our timeline and our plan of approach to bring our kids back. Questions that anybody?
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Anybody have a question, any board member? I can't see everybody's.
I see Candace.
Okay, so is this negotiable?
But the timeline, Candace, I would say, no, at this point, this is what we've really worked hard with the elementary administration as well as the staff. And when we presented that, this is the timeline that we presented, you know, to work with them. So, and you know, there's a lot of rationale behind that too, you know, Jeff, Melissa, Danielle, you know, we went back and forth. It was longer at one point, you know, it, it was shorter, we found ourselves in the middle and a lot of it wrapped around the vaccine. And the hopeful, you know, opportunity to vaccinate.
Okay, all right, well, I think that I've said probably throughout the years, maybe five or six different times when, yes, we have the opportunity to give input and that input absolutely matters and I will give mine. And I really dislike it when I don't have a vote, I don't. You know, we're, we're really seeing the ramifications of the, the hybrid model. And people just, they want their kids back to school, so I, I completely and utterly get it. I want our kids back to school also. I like some of the things, I like the fact that we're going to continue with the virtual Viking. Although my question was that, I saw elementary noted and I would assume that that would resonate through middle school and high school option also, right?
Yeah, exactly, it would maintain. And remember, middle school and high school are different with virtual, like, if they, they just zoom into the classrooms, they don't have their own set program.
Okay, and like just little things that I had noted down. We've got, it, it seems like, and I, and I'm not going to be critical, so Tim, don't think I am, because he's called me critical before. I'm not going to be criticizing anybody or anything. I understand the, the logistics of it all and all of these different scenarios and that we have to be respectful of all the populations that we serve. So when I got the timeline, the first thing that came to my mind was, oh, that is that snail pace, that's very slow. So my thought was, is if we could negotiate something where you, you did something a little bit different, maybe K through two brought in, then third and fourth, then maybe fifth and sixth, possibly around the same time. What I, what I don't want to see is that we're waiting until the end of the year to bring back our students specific to, and all the kids need to come back, I'm not saying that one population needs more, but the middle school and the high school, I think, has shown in the data and some of the things that are needed that that is the largest group, that we really need to get those kids back as soon as we can. So what I would hate to see is it elongated, where they're only going to have a short time in, in, in school. So I, I would like to see that changed, I, I'm not going to lie. I understand at the end of the day that it is what it is, but I think that it's unfair to not say, you know, that they, I, I think that they should be coming back. And if it could be really looked at to kind of get that done a little bit faster. I'm happy about a survey, I think I asked and I kept, I've been asking, right? So I'm super excited about a survey. I think that although I'm not data-driven, it will give us a really great idea of how many families are going to choose the virtual Viking option versus coming back to school. For myself, I'd like to see kids come back five days a week, but I also understand that having that middle day, that Wednesday, at first, I think is going to be very important to continue to clean. But I'd like to see it phased out, like the end of March, you know, into April and seeing the kids come back five days a week. That's what I, that's what I would like to see. There was a couple of other things that I had written down, was the survey, a task force, I don't know if a task force or maybe an ad hoc committee, because we are going to continue to have the challenges of COVID, COVID's not going to go away. So I think that that might be something to look at, I know that it was brought up at the last meeting, I think that that might be a good idea. And then if I come up with anything else, I'll, I'll chime in, but right off the bat, I just, I'd like to see it done a little more expeditiously, you know, a little bit faster. But I also understand, that's what I wanted to speak to, to the, our teachers. So I understand what is being said and that the teachers can come back without being vaccinated. And it is resonating. And I guess I come back to what the right thing to do is, right? Because I understand their fears about coming back to school. And I think that that March 1st is respectful of that. And I'm hopeful that they'll be able to get their vaccines so that they feel that they feel like they're, they're, feel better about it or feel more secure. I think that that's one of the biggest things. And there are some that feel, well, they just need to come back. And that bothers me, it bothers me, because it's almost as though people are devaluing who they are and what they do. And that's not fair, and that's not nice. And I will be the first one to say that I won't do it. I know what it's like to be devalued and this is what you're going to do, because I can make you do it. And I've spoken to that, being non-essential to essential. And there's no way that I could look at a teacher, one of ours or any other teacher for that matter, and, and say that they don't matter. So I can't do that. So I understand the March 1st, I can support the March 1st, I just wish that we could kind of look at that timeline a little bit more. I'm thankful for the feedback that you had sent us. There was a tremendous amount from the teachers, so that was a really great opportunity to read through. And that's all I got for right now.
I saw, I saw Jamie raised her hand and then I see Eric, so Jamie and then Eric.
So I'm just going to start by saying I am terrified of both sending everyone back and of keeping it the way it goes. I'm terrified of both, whatever we do, it scares me to death. But I, the kids are struggling, the parents are struggling and his teachers are struggling. Everybody's struggling. Everybody's mental health is struggling. And I know that we said that that timeline is non-negotiable, but I would like to see an across the board phased in approach. Phase in the high school, the middle school and elementary schools simultaneously. Because what I'm seeing is that schedule, the kids are going to be in high school till June. And they need to be back sooner than that. They need to be back way sooner than June. And I don't know why we can't do a simultaneous across the board. We're, we're not talking about everyone back all at once in every single school, but if we do a phase in K one, five, nine, two, six, eight, ten, and just do it phased in that way. I don't see why that's not something that can't happen because you're still doing your phasing in, but you're doing it much faster than June. I, I just seeing my children struggle and I know that all, all these other parents on here are seeing their own children struggle. I know these teachers are seeing their students struggle. It's hard. These kids just want to get some normalcy back. And I know the teachers want some normalcy back. And I know we're all scared. I'm petrified of my kids catching COVID. I'm petrified of our teachers catching COVID. I'm petrified of catching COVID. I, I don't want any of us to be put into a dangerous situation. But if we continue the path we're on, I see more harm coming to everyone than good. I mean, I just, I, I don't have an answer. There's no way to make everybody happy. I just would, I'd rather see an across the board phased in approach instead of the phased in approach that we are currently looking at.
Okay, good. Eric and then Kate.
Yeah, I, I can go. Lee, you had your hand up well before, I think, anyone else. I just want to make sure because.
Okay.
Lee.
Appreciate that Eric. Most of my comments were largely what Candace and Jamie have already voiced over. I think it's really important to do a phased in approach, to do right by our teachers and our families and our kids because there have been so many transitions. And like the reason that we want to get our kids back into school, like they're very, very urgent. And while I think we obviously need to keep like the safety of our kids and staff as our North Star. The timeline does just seem so incredibly long. And so I would just echo Jamie and Candace and any way that we can think through either bringing back middle school and high school as well, or two grade levels at a time. I, I, I guess I'm just still trying to grapple with like the science and medical advice behind that flow of a phased in approach. If we're saying that it's safe to bring back, you know, all of our kindergartners at one time, I guess, with the appropriate measures in place. I'm just having a tough time coming to terms with why that was the timeline that was settled on.
So thanks.
Bye.
Eric, go ahead.
Thanks. So I know Jeff said this at the beginning. I think Jamie has said, probably everyone has said it, but I, I just want to reiterate that there's no really easy or good, great decision to make here. There just isn't. And, you know, it's, it's easy to take one perspective, take another perspective, take one view, take another view. If you talk to 10 people, you're going to get, you know, 10 different views on what should be done. So I think that, you know, it hasn't been that, you know, the administration, it hasn't been that the Board of Ed have been dragging our feet. I really don't think we have. I think we've been looking for information, trying to make the best decision we can. I think as I, you know, reflect and I think I agree mostly with what's been said. For me, I think elementary school is kind of the easiest of everything. Three schools, lower, lower densities. Middle school, I'd like to, I agree, I'd like to see some acceleration in the middle school. The Kiva concept should allow for, you know, segregating and managing density to, to an extent. I think the high school is, is brutally challenging and I struggle, struggle just for me logistically on how we have, you know, a thousand students in the school every day and lunch, all the other stuff. I know we don't have lunch at the same time every, like as we did, you know, in previous years, but I, I struggle just logistically, how are we going to do the high school? And, and as, you know, my personal, how I personally view this, I look is what's the, what could happen? Okay. If we, if we knew two months from now, you know, cases didn't increase, everything went smoothly. Of course we'd say send everybody back, right? But we, we don't know that. And if you said in two months from now, what happens is we see a high incident, high increase in number of cases, both in students and teachers. And we end up having to shut down because of that. We, we'd reflect back and say, oh, we made the wrong decision. We can't, we don't have that foresight to be able to look two months ahead and see what happens. So my biggest concern, you know, as I reflect back, you know, my biggest concern is that we have to close schools again. And fully remote. And I'm, I'm worried about that. That will be, that'll be really bad. You know, in terms of where we are with hybrid, it's not ideal. Fully remote's really bad. And that's, that's my concern. So but to reflect back on, I think what Lee, Jamie and Candace said, you know, I like elementary schools. If there's a way to accelerate it, great. I would like to see a plan for the middle school, similar kind of phasing in approach. And I, for the high school, I'd like to see a true like, how are we operationally, logistically actually going to manage a thousand students every day? Or, or is there some other kind of way to do that? I, I'd like to see different ideas. I, I want the high school back in. I mean, I, I really, you know, I, I really would like to see the high school back in. I, I'm just struggling personally to see how we make it and, and do it safely. So that's my thoughts and thanks for listening.
Thanks, Eric. Kate, you've got your hand up.
I, I do have my hand up. What I wanted to ask is specifically Jeff, you mentioned more Plexiglas. I'm wondering if increased air handling systems might also be reviewed? And, you know, do we have equal air handling systems across all of our buildings? And, you know, can we improve that somehow? I think COVID to some extent still remains an anomaly. We don't understand it completely. And my second question or comment, I guess, would be, are there other things that we can do to remedy the instruction and the learning, like other creative ideas that we haven't explored that could be help to kind of avail the opportunities, make the creativity to advance kids' learning? Thank you.
Good, very good. Excellent. Any other board members comments? Candace, let me hang in just a second. I just want to make sure. John? I don't, I can't see John, so.
Yeah, John has his hands up.
I, I have my hand up. Yep. Just a question for Jeff. So regionally, when you talk to other superintendents, where are they going?
Around, it, it, it varies. Right now, we're, 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 we've kicked the can going here. So those that are around us, you know, are now in the process of discussions about phasing in as well. Absent, of course, you know, Old Lime and a few others down the coast. And I'm going up the other way. You know, they're starting the process right behind us.
Yeah, that's, that's the most troubling thing about the whole situation is the governor's taking so much liberty of the executive orders. And yet for superintendents and, and town by town, zero guidance for the most part, right? So, you know, I, I see it from the same lenses Candace and Lee and, and Jamie and Eric of, of, you know, I wish this was moving a little quicker. But at the same time, we're in an impossible situation that we, nobody's ever managed before. So, but I wish that there was more guidance when it came from the top, when there's so many executive orders coming down to the towns and, and average citizens as well.
That would have been nice, Sean. I agree with you.
That's good. Let's see. Bill, Bill, I can't, I don't see Bill. So did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I just had a, a comment that I, I, you know, we, obviously I'm looking at it through the, my, how I've experienced this and my experience has been a, a full in experience. We've ridden the wave of, you know, increased cases by not shutting down the school, but having large numbers of students quarantine. And in some cases faculty quarantining as well. And what I, what I see differently is, you know, while in, in, on some occasions, literally half the school has been absent. The difference is those students are returning in 14 days. And, and that's 14 calendar days, not 14 school days. So the, the number of days that students miss is much less, even if you've got high absentee rates due to quarantining or, or, you know. So ultimately, all the kids are in the school for a lot more of the school year. So it's just a, you know, when Eric was talking about, you know, if we see, if things spike up, I don't necessarily think that that means a shutdown. I guess obviously if it's staff related and we can't handle, you know, we, we can't run the school because of depending on where that, those cases occur. But if, if it, if it's student cases and you can quarantine, you can still have a lot of school, students in school and have them come back. So it's, it is working for us. It's not ideal either, but there is an option there to run, run it that way as well.
Okay, good, good. Barry, I see you got your hand up.
I'm trying to make this quick, read rooms of information about this. I'm very impressed with the feedback from the teachers on that link that Jamie presented us, where like over, I think I kind of like 190 different comments on their health concerns. I'm also very respectful and thankful for all the parents and medical personnel in the community that have written very thoughtful and well researched articles for us. And I've read through many of those, the reference of links that they've given. And they present a really good case. The thing that strikes me is back to Candace's opening remark about whether this is negotiable or not. And it brings, it's a constant question I have about the board. Let's just say hypothetically that we have six, seven, eight board members here who said that we think that this opening process should be accelerated. And would we be in a position to make a motion to say to the administration, please come back to us with three different plans. One, the current plan, one that has middle school back by say, March fifteenth, and one that says have everybody back by March fifteenth. And to see what those three different options look like. I mean, I don't know if we have the prerogative as a board to, to make that, or if we're just in a position of this, offering our opinions and this being just basically a non-negotiable plan.
Yeah, in all, in all, all other matters, Barry, the board would have, has the power to do all the things you were mentioning. However, Jeff, we're still underneath the governor's direction and the superintendents are still the, the people that are in charge of the district with respect to COVID related matters. Is that still correct, Jeff?
That's exactly correct. And I stated that at the beginning where, you know, it's the decision per the commissioners, you know, between the superintendent and the health department. And, you know, he put that in place, you know, for a reason. And, you know, I, I'll be blunt, you know, buried, you know, by doing that, the board would totally undermine, you know, my efforts and the work of our administrators and all the staff. And frankly, I really don't think that's fair because, you know, then I think our district loses trust in the board. And, you know, the collaborative work that we've worked to, to really achieve over the years.
Okay. Barry, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank, thank you. Jill, do you have anything you want to ask or, or say? Are you there, Jill? You're on mute. Okay, I guess not. Candace?
I have nothing to say. I'm sorry.
Okay. Candace, you have your hand up again, so.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's, I'm not going to dominate. Don't worry. But I just wanted to caveat on Eric because he did bring up a very important logistic that our high school specifically has. And yes, it's a thousand students. So my thought on that was that was going to be very beneficial with the survey. Because I, I can, I, I predict, I'm not always right. Most of the time I am, but not always. So with, I, I predict that not all 1,000 students and families are going to choose to come back to school. I could be wrong. So I'm eager to see the survey, I, to see the results of that so that we can have a baseline to go on. I'm really glad that Bill chimed in because Bill has been living the other side of that, right? And he is always so honest and authentic. And he really brings a great perspective on that one. Well, and everything that he brings really. So I'm really, really happy with that. And with that said, I have fear too. I, I do. I mean, I think that it's fair that we all have that, right? In many different aspects. And the people that are watching and joining us tonight in our community at large right now, that's pretty much what people are running on is fear. And if we don't, if we don't walk forward and continue to try to just move forward and, and get to where we need to be. And yes, we're going to have fear, but continue to go. We're not going to get there. So I said it in September, I think it was the October meeting that, you know, I feel like it's worth the risk and then having the phased in. I just, I feel like we have so many, so many families, and I'm going to try not to cry, suffering, suffering in a lot of different ways. And I know that not everybody sees that or understands it. But even from the very beginning, we've said, I know I've said, and many have chimed in because everybody's having their own different experience and no experience is the same. And, and there are families that are truly suffering from the academic impact and the social impact and what the future lies with that. So I know that we are made up of an incredible group of people that at the end of the day, may have different opinions or views. At the end of the day, we have the best interests of this district in, in focus. So I have faith in all of you. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks Candace. Eric, did you raise your hand again?
Yeah, real, I'll be real quick. So one is great discussion. I really appreciate hearing everybody's views. So Tim, thanks for doing that. Tim, I don't know if you had some views as well. Maybe you'll say at the end. But one other just quick comment is, you know, for this to work, it, it really is all of us working together. And, you know, parents talking to other parents and just trying to get, I know it's hard, but, you know, social distancing, not, not only in the class, in school, it's outside of school. It's in the living rooms. It's in, you know, that's where a lot of more of the transmission is happening. I don't, I know Jeff said he can't confer, he doesn't know 100% that it hasn't happened in school, but I can guarantee you that it's significantly less in school than it is outside of school. So the more that if parents, you know, can, can help us get the word out and really try to push, help with other parents, help us, and it's like what is needed, you know, wear a mask. Okay. If you're hanging out, at least wear a mask. At least try to do something to help. And I know it will be better in the spring when we can get outside. And it's really hard right now, but the help, help from the parents is, is really appreciated to pass the word. Tim, thank you.
Yep. Okay, good. Yeah, I just a couple of things I, I have to share and that is, because Jeff and I talk every day for about at least a half an hour. I can, I can assure the board that he and his team have spent an amazing, thinking this through and trying to do the right thing as well as of, of effort that they've, you know, they've, they've come up with this plan. They really have put in an enormous amount of time. I heard two things. I heard two things. Obviously, we wanted to, we want to get the kids back, definitely. I just totally agree with that. But the two things are, we want to see a middle school game plan. So if you, Jeff, you and Jason, and we want to see what, what we're going to do with the middle school. And then the second point is the high school is a very complex matter. We want to see a game plan to bring the kids back into the high school as well. And, and again, it could be, there are different options, like Barry was saying. We very much want to see how we would go about achieving that. Because let's face it, COVID is still probably going to be with us in the fall. And so, so if we just say, well, we're going to wait until the fall, it's going to, we're going to have the same, we're still going to be facing this issue with, with the high school. So that's what I heard. I heard, let's, let's see a game plan. Let's see the game plan for the middle school. Let's see a game plan for the high school and have those conversations as well. Okay? I hope that was, I hope that was clear. If people could hear me.
Well said, Tim. And, you know, middle school planning is already underway, as you know, Mr. Bickgood and myself. And
Yeah, I just one other point down, and that is, I can't, I can't, I totally agree with Candace on the importance of the surveying. It's so important. And so we need to make sure that that all has, not only at the elementary level, middle school and high school. We need to get that information in terms of the, of what, what, what's out there in terms of the bringing the kids back into school. So I think those are very important. Okay? All right, let's, so with that, unless somebody's, we'll move on with our agenda. Okay? So the next item up is for discussion and action. And that's a proposed Eastline Public School Calendar for 2021, 2022. This is a regularly scheduled event that we have to do in terms of adopting a proposed calendar. So Jeff, you know?
Yeah, so we want to talk about, you know, the revised calendar as we look at for next year. This has got a lot of input that came from our PDAC Committee, which consists of a number of staff members, you know, across the, across the district. And really they focus on, you know, the PD side of things and supporting, you know, where we want our PD days and how we manage those PD days, you know, for our staff. So just not vastly different from, you know, the, the current year's calendar. Let me just pull it up. Hopefully our board members had a chance to, to take a look at it. I just want to highlight a couple of components. Number one, you know, we, we made it two pages now. So on the back of the calendar will basically be, we say, you know, let that in the school hours, this early dismissal hours. We always get a lot of questions about that. And we also just ran a complete, you know, from start to finish chronological order of, of the days and, and what takes place. Sometimes parents and folks like to see it that way. So we, we drafted it in that manner as well. Couple of key points that we really worked with PDAC and the union, unions on was beginning of the year. So the 24th of August would be, you know, new staff orientation. The 25th would be convocation, staff professional learning. And then we added a professional learning day in on the 26th. That's one additional day for next year that we agreed upon with, with the teachers' union, really. Cause it's, we have to do an MOU with them and their contract because of, by adding that, that day in. But that would give us, you know, a little bit more time for professional development. And their staff planning day would be the 27th where they have time, you know, obviously in their classrooms and preparing for the start of the year with kids. And then it was a little dark here, but the first day of school would be Monday, the 31st. Now, one thing we did do, I want to reference. We have had traditionally, the last couple of years, we've had a full day, you know, PD days across the calendar. We took two of them and we split them into half days, which gave us now four half days. But by doing that, we are recapturing two student days in the calendar. And by adding this day in here, the 26th, we took that one from January and we put that over here at the beginning of the year. So hence, there's three days, because the concern was when you looked at the end of the calendar year, we were here originally on the 20th for our last day of school. That, that is late. And we were concerned about the lateness in that because, you know, we have our three, what we call snowflake days embedded in the calendar. But anything beyond three, and a couple of years ago, we had nine, you know, inclement weather days, I'll call them, because some were for wind and power outages. You know, you start talking about, you know, additional six days, you're, you're jumping into the very last week of June potentially. So we thought that was, you know, it's too late in the year. So we, by capturing those three days through the PD adjustments, we were able to back the last day of school up to the 15th, where if we have a couple of snow days, we have 181 calendar days. You know, hopefully, you know, it would land us around the 17th. We seem to like, you know, Friday, the 17th, or the Friday being a good, you know, graduation day. So cleaned it up a little bit, added in a legend down here. Again, we had agreed last for this year's calendar on 181 school days. We left it at that. You know, the snowflake day seemed to be working well this year. We've used up the three, as everybody should have gotten a, you know, call about 45 minutes ago. We have our first remote day tomorrow because of the pending weather. And that, again, those three days worked well this year. So if, in the calendar, if we have a snow day, the first one becomes a student day. So just to reiterate, if we have a snow day, let's say in January, that means that this first snowflake day, the 18th, becomes a, a student day and so on. So just in the essence of time, with that, I'll kind of stop sharing. If you've had a chance to look at the calendar. Also, just one other quick important point, you know, we are calling all holidays, whether they be, you know, the Christmas holiday or the, the, you know, the Martin Luther King Day or any of those, you know, holidays are now just called simply school holidays. And we've taken the names off of them. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing and just kind of turn it over. There any thoughts that anybody has? Again, draft calendar, but you know, PDAC did a, I want to give a shout out to, to them and that committee, our professional development and evaluation committee for their hard work and giving us feedback as well as, you know, administrators and staff.
Any, any board members, any comments about the calendar proposal? Amy, did you raise your hand? Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
You like the calendar, Jane. We always look for your feedback, Jamie.
I know. All right, so, so because this year I've been hearing a lot of calendar issues. Because I guess it, it's kind of vague and there's different calendars up on the website. Depending on which school link you click on Eastline Schools website, you're getting an old calendar or a new calendar. So my request is, is that maybe we make sure that they're all the same calendar. And then if we could maybe do a little bit more clarification on snowflake days or snow days and what that means, because there was also a lot of confusion about that.
Yeah, we could definitely, we send out a couple, we can send out more. We, we can continue, because that's going to take a little while for people, I think, you know. It's going to take more than a year for them.
Only because we haven't done them in so long.
I know. You're right. Yep.
And then I guess I have a question. On all these early dismissals, which are a lot, eight half days are a lot of half days. And I know it still counts as a contact day, but for parents, it's still a half day. And I'm seeing in my head, we're all going to be in school full time next year. So that's eight half days that parents are going to have to take off or find childcare for, as opposed to just before it would have been. But days all say PM. Is that because it's in the afternoon? Or is that supposed to be something instead of PD?
No, the PM means that the staff will be engaging in professional learning in the afternoon. Students leave.
Okay, because I was like, did we change what PD meant? Because
Sorry, no.
I was trying to, I'm like professional math, professional something, but okay, so it just means afternoon. Okay.
Exactly.
It was very confusing for me when I was reading it, because I was like, I don't know what another abbreviation for PDD, PD day is. So those are my it's. I know I always have more, but that's it. I like the length of the school year. And I, you know how I feel about all those half days.
Oh, yeah. Good. Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody else. Okay, so board, Jeff, do you want us to take action on this?
Yeah, because we're a little bit behind the game on the calendar. We typically at the, at last meeting in January usually worked to adopt this. And we got to start working into our, you know, our PD and setting things up as we think about next year. So yes, we'd like to adopt this.
So anybody like to make a motion to adopt the proposed Eastline Public Calendar for 2122 school year?
I will make the motion to adopt the 2122 school calendar.
Okay, on a second then? Eric, is that a second? I see you raising your hand.
I can second it.
I assume that that's a second. Okay, good. Hey, any other discussion on this topic? Okay, all those in favor of the motions? Oh, Kate, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Well, a discussion item is if you look up October 11th, 2021, Google that up, it comes up as Columbus Day. And I think all of our work with diversity, equity and inclusion still points to that as a problem. So I know you're calling it holiday, but all of those holidays are called holidays. So I'm just thinking that we need to be more clear with that, calling it something, encouraging staff and faculty to look at it as another opportunity for diversity, equity and inclusion. And really emphasize that if we keep it as a holiday, we don't, we don't need it to be a holiday on that particular day, unless there's something that we're truly celebrated. So I just, because we've worked hard on this whole issue of diversity, equity and inclusion in our town and in our school districts, I just really want to bring that up. I also think that the break for April is a long break. And I don't know why that needs to go on. And then also two days in February, those are two days you wouldn't have to go to school so late in, in June if you didn't have all these breaks throughout the year.
Thanks, Kate.
Okay, any other comments about the motion that's on the table? All right, so with that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, aye. Does anybody want to be opposed to the motion? Anybody want to abstain?
I abstain.
He abstains. We have one abstention and nine for it. Okay, so that motion passes. Thanks. And we'll move on to the next item, which is for discussion. And this is, this is a, an overview of the 19, I'm sorry, the 2019, 2020 District and School Improvement Plans Overview and the timeline for developing those plans for 2122. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Yeah, let me just start off by saying, you know, there, there was a request for us to kind of look back at the 1920 plans and just bring forth, you know, where we, we just kind of crashed it last March and stopped even looking at these because our life got flipped upside down with COVID and everything changed. So it, it was a good point. I think we had an opportunity administratively across the board to look back at the 1920 plan, see the work, you know, that, that did occur and really provide just a quick cursory overview. We're not going to dive into specifics. We don't have a lot of specifics. We don't have a lot of data because it just ended. But what's important is, you know, the work that happened in 1920 carries over to the next year. And we plan, as we move on to March, to start talking and working in the development of the new plans for 2122. And there's some collective work that we can all do. I think we've had a lot of good conversations at the, you know, the board level, administrative level on that. So with that being said, we start the elementary level and just have the elementary principles and a combined effort. They're going to give you a quick synopsis of some of the successes, I guess I'll call it, and that cursory overview of the work that was done collectively at the elementary level. So Mr. Provost, Mr. Showman?
I'm up first. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I've got the first goal. And we started this goal over the summer last year when we met as an elementary school. Just to give you a little background, the three schools, the last couple of years have met together with all of our school improvement teams meeting together to draft these goals up. So the goals at each elementary school are the same for the last couple of years. That's how we've been doing. It's been very successful. So it's just a little background. The first goal here in terms of, of focusing decisions on system operations and student success. Basically, a summary of that is this was a goal in which we were trying to improve our use and increase our use of Infinite Campus. We had talked about collaborating virtually in Teams and communications via Microsoft 365, increasing the usage of the district-wide software to enhance learning and advance user knowledge of frontline solutions. And so when we did that, remember, this was before the pandemic. So this looked like it was going to be a heavy lift for us technologically, for our teachers and our administrators and our staff. In the end, we, we, we were forced by the pandemic to, to, to really overachieve on this. So you're going to hear things in here that we accomplished that we didn't even put down because in March, everything changed. So of all the goals, this one was accomplished and then some. So I'll take you through a few of the key highlights and progress that we made. So teachers consistently used Infinite Campus to record attendance, message out to parents and complete the MTSS tier documentation. We had ongoing targeted personalized professional learning occurring with our instructional texts. We had office discipline referrals were actually inputted for the first time into Infinite Campus. We had communications to families through Infinite Campus. And that use of Infinite Campus at least doubled last year compared to what we had used it before. Few areas that we used there to show you some examples. We increased the Infinite Campus users, usage corresponding with families. Our library and media specialists sent out newsletters. And a lot of our principals, I think all of us, used Infinite Campus for our weekly letters. And then we also started using Sway as well. Continuing on, we use frontline solutions and we use that consistently for absence management, supervision evaluation, special education and our documentation of 504s. In addition to that, we also district-wide worked on creating self-assessments of the ISTI standards for students. The MTSS team entered both tier two and tier three academic, social, emotional goals and interventions in Infinite Campus for the first time. The building-based texts and office administrative assistance provided professional development on how to email parents through Infinite Campus, how to use behavioral referrals at Infinite Campus, and how to email groups in Infinite Campus. And our ELA and math consultants worked with teachers on using online MTSS tier one forums in Infinite Campus as well. In addition to the goals that we set for ourselves, because of March and what happened with the pandemic, all staff and faculty use Microsoft Teams and its video conferencing tools daily for grade level faculty and district-wide meetings from March to the present. In addition to that, the two teams' goals, all staff and faculty also learned Zoom video conferencing. Classroom teachers conducted morning meetings using Zoom from March, from June through the present time. And all staff also learned the seesaw platform for communicating lessons and assignments to students and parents. So as you can see, that particular goal was met and overachieved, you know, and, and we, we were forced to do that. So sometimes things occur and, and you have to react to them. So really great progress was made on that first goal. Thank you. Any questions I can take? Otherwise, I think Melissa's up next.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
So I had goal two, and goal two was collaborative culture. The district will set priorities to fund training and resources to implement the framework for teaching and learning. There were two strategic actions tied to that goal. Strategic action number one, provide learning environments that promote active learning based on individual needs as assessed by formative and benchmark assessments, looking primarily at domain three from the Looking primarily at domain three from the CCT rubric for effective teaching. Which is instruction for active learning. So there are four domains in the CCT and. We were focusing on domain three last year. So remember, as Jeff said, this is an amalgamation of all three of the elementary schools and our overall progress. So our building based language arts instructional coaches. Were able to work with individual staff members to target instruction through a coaching cycle. So they were able to finish a coaching cycle and we were starting to plan on another coaching cycle before the pandemic hit. During those coaching cycles, the instructional coach focused on student engagement. Reading stamina and using assessments to focus instruction. There was also math coaching that occurred around fact fluency. Integrating math workshop model and understanding the major work of the grade level. However, I will just put a plug in that the coaching. At the math level certainly was not as robust as at the language arts because we only have one math coach for all three schools. And she could only coach so many people at a time. But anyways, she did engage in the work and did a wonderful job with what she was able to do. We also, we have something at the elementary level called teaching and learning meetings that happen bi weekly with our grade levels. And during those meetings, we focused on domain three. And as well as observations in midyear reflections, we addressed domain three to improve research based instructional practices. So we were lucky enough to be able to get through our midyear conferences before the pandemic hit. To see the, the goals and the progress that teachers had made on their goals. Teacher observations focused on an indicator in domain three. So then what we decided to do was to take a deeper dive. And looking at domain three and the indicators on each of our schools. I think we had maybe focusing on a different indicator, but we were all focusing overall in domain three. And we also had some professional development that occurred around that specific indicator that was identified to focus on. And then the other strategic action was to develop an understanding of universal design for learning. Otherwise known as UDL. To foster an equitable and engaging learning experience for all students to succeed. And so we did start to do some good work with this. Unfortunately, we weren't able to continue it. But there was a template that we had created for informal collaborative visits. So we were having our teaching staff go in and informally visit other classrooms and they had to fill out a template as a result as they reflected on their visit. And visits obviously were started, but like I said, they were not able to be completed. Grade level model lessons were shared using the UDL guidelines in mind. We introduced the UDL guidelines. So we had some conversations. It was a preliminary rollout. That was the first work we've done with UDL. Our professional development needs were assessed. There was reflection that occurred around professional development needs. And once again, just noting for math coaches. And then we did have a chance to do some reflections on our first, first coaching cycle. And we were developing the second coaching cycle that was like I had said previously unable to get off the ground. So Danielle, I'll turn it over to you for goal three.
All right, great. Thank you, Melissa. So our third goal was student centered learning and the theory of action was to build a shared meaning, capacity and commitment to action through the use of. Universal screening, and this is for social and emotional competencies. Engaging our social workers to connect with our students and families. The use of the castle competencies to support our students with SEL. And then also the introduction of the principles of universal design for learning as Melissa was just talking about. So. Although each building had various ways to meet goal three, there was a through line when it came to overall progress made in all three schools. So all three of our schools use the universal screening tool, the DESSA, the Devro Student Strengths Assessment. And this is a nationally normed behavioral rating scale designed to measure behaviors related to resilience, social, emotional competence and school success for children. So school admin and staff reviewed the data to identify needs in the building and then discuss the UDL strategies. That can make a positive impact for our students in the classroom. Social and emotional committees were established and meetings were held at the different schools. Our school social workers collaborated and worked with the building staff and the SEL committee to develop lessons for students. And also to provide professional development. The SEL committees also reviewed the castle competencies, UDL and the tier one toolbox to help. Staff had discussions of this universal design for learning and it's really the why, the what and the how of learning. And then the strategies and application in the classroom in response to our teaching and learning meeting needs. We also had regular MTSS meetings. That's our multi tiered system of supports. We have lots of acronyms here. And those were to discuss students and to analyze the data collected from the DESSA. During remote learning in the spring, support staff provided students with social emotional learning lessons weekly through Seesaw. And our support staff members were providing ongoing training for paraprofessionals, for our classroom teachers. Our specials team, special ed and even admin in meeting the SEL needs of our kiddos. And then finally, programs were implemented at each of the schools, including Choose Love, Gizmo, We Thinkers and the Social Thinking Curriculum. So that's an overview of how we met the student centered learning goals, which was our third goal.
Wow, very good. Any, any questions for our three elementary principals and their three goals? Barry, go ahead.
Let me just unmute. Okay. I don't need this information, but I think going forward, it would be great if on those. Measures and issues that you were talking about, if you could provide some. Feedback on the actual outcome measures. For example, you did the DESSA stuff and. There must be some type of beginning and ending point to it. So. What was the, the growth on like say a DESSA or if you did the social emotional learning issues, the core competencies? What was the, the growth and the shift on that across the year? And I would just in the other thing that's interesting is in the professional development where you focused in on domain three. Was there a difference in the observations of teachers in the, their capabilities of hitting? The domain, the issues that you were finding in domain three? You know, for example, at the beginning of the year, there's teachers were like doing, you know. Not doing certain things on domain three. And by the end of the year, because of the emphasis, emphasis on domain three, they were doing more things on domain three. So I think, you know, it's, it's good to get a description of kind of like what you did as a process, but. And then going forward next year, as we do these plans, if we could get. More ideas of what was the impact or what was the outcome or what was the movement over the year? What was the actual improvement on the? Processes that you used.
Yeah, in agreement, Barry. You know, we talked a lot about, you know, the outcomes and the measures. I think how we designed those plans. That's why we want to start sooner than later in March. If you have ourselves ample time, you're thinking about, you know, the setup of those. So I appreciate that feedback.
Great. Any else? Okay, Jeff, carry on.
All right, we'll turn it over to Jason. Thank you, Danielle, Melissa, Jeff, Mr. Bickert, the middle school level.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So, so thanks for having me tonight. And you know, it's, it's going to be hard to kind of sum up because I think, you know, when we go back. It's easy to focus on the last three months of last school year because that's when it all started, March thirteenth, I believe was the date. It was a great year. I mean, we had a really great year from August all the way up until March. And there were a lot of things to really celebrate there. And then a lot of good things happen after that. So hopefully I can kind of showcase all that for the year. I want to kind of reiterate a little bit what Jeff Provost talked about. He, he went back and said, look, let me put it in context for you. So we have a school improvement team. It's really our team leader team. We get together three times a month. And that was the same group of folks that got together two summers ago to help develop this plan. We developed the plan. We touch base periodically throughout the plan to see. As Barry said, if we're, are we making progress towards the plan? Are we going to achieve these outcomes in the plan? So I think we did a lot of those. So I'm going to go ahead and start on that first goal, which was really focusing decisions. And systems operations on our student success. So our big thing was really, and we've been talking about this for years was, hey, when are. When are we going to use Google Classroom? And when are we going to get devices? And when are we going to, you know, technically, we're not a Google school in terms of Google. But really, in practicality, we're a Google school now. And if you think about that, if we would have gone down that path. It probably would have been at least a two year rollout, possibly a three year rollout with the PD and everything. I got to tell you, March thirteenth to the end of June, we were pretty much a Google school. It happened really, really quickly. Again, as Mr. Provost said, a lot of things are, you know, you just have to do them because that's the situation that you're in. So our teachers did an outstanding job with that. And if you remember last March, we didn't initially use Google and then we made a switch sometime in April. And we became a hundred percent exclusively Google just for consistency for kids and for families and for teachers. So I would count that as a huge initiative and a huge success for us. And they've integrated, integrated Google Classroom with software like Desmos, Screencast, Matic, the, the list of programs that we use for Google Classroom is really kind of extensive. So I won't go through all those. A great resource for our teachers, for our kids, for our families has been Carlo Wodovitch, our media center specialist. And Jen Burcelli, our school technologist. They have created these tutorials that are really a work of art. I mean, I think if they decided to kind of go. Go public with those things, they'd probably make a killing because they've put together and they have, it's not just a collection of. Hey, I'm going to go online and I'm going to find a video for you to watch. They've created their own videos. Which makes it so much more personal for our teachers because it's a face. It's someone they trust. It's someone they value. And they can go in there and go through those tutorials. So go on our website, go on the, on our school media center site. And you can kind of go in there and see some of the work that they've done. Some of them have come off the site, but there's still a great selection on there. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that. Zoom, I think everyone in, in the world has probably become proficient in Zoom. But nonetheless, it's a program that we all needed to learn and we all use it on a consistent basis. And I think we've become more refined with it over time. And so everyone did a great job with Zoom. As the elementary, my colleagues there talked about the ISTI standards. International Society for Technology and Education. They used to be called the National Education Technology Standards. We have a template for those that I created a couple of years ago and we would align the standards with the particular units that the teachers were going. And it was sort of, we, there's standards for both teachers and for students. So we would pass out the templates and then we would go through those and say, okay. What standards have you been accomplishing in, in which particular unit are you using to accomplish those standards? We did that extensively the year before last and we did that, you know, probably at sixty six percent last year. We didn't do it the last third of the year. But we certainly did it the first two semesters of the, of the school year. And those are great because it gets folks thinking about. Hey, I'm a little bit nervous about these standards, but let me tell you, Jason, what I've been doing. And then we find that a lot of the standards fit into some things in the good work that they're already doing. So lots of progress with the ISTI standards. We had some teachers actually attend some professional development outside of the district on the ISTI standards. We've used Infinite Campus, much like the elementary school principal said, we've used that as our primary platform. We use it to communicate. If you're a parent in my building, you've seen that we've done a Friday letter all through last spring. We picked it up again, probably, you know, mid fall. Friday letter goes out. We also do a Q and A of whatever the issues are for the staff. And every Friday, I send out a Q and A. Just to kind of clarify, just to maybe reiterate, reiterate some points that might have come up at our district level meetings. And so we just surveyed team leader this afternoon about the Q and A. Is it helpful? Something we're going to continue to do. I think, you know, we want to over communicate and that's been helpful for us as well. Something that we're really, really proud of at Eastline Middle School, about three and a half years ago. We started down the path of really defining what we used to call it RTI. It's MTSS now, a multi tiered system of supports. Three years ago, we brought a team of teachers together. We spent the whole year. If you haven't seen our MTSS handbook, it's really quite well done. The credit all goes to the team for doing that. We looked at districts like Guilford, we looked at Glastonbury, we looked at Farmington, we looked at West Hartford. We looked at all the districts that we felt were doing a good job with that. And we created. A program that's, that's really, really well done. That's why I'm super excited. If we can possibly get our math coordinator, because I think that that's going to fill a big gap that we have really in the tier three interventions. So. Lots of work on MTSS, but what's been great about MTSS, we've incorporated that into Infinite Campus. So you can actually go into Infinite Campus, you can go into the portal. And if you need to fill out a form for a student for a tier two or tier three, both for academics and for SEL. You can go right in there, find the form, the forms have been vetted, their teacher created. We didn't just take the forms from another district. They were really an organic process in Eastline right at the middle school. So. Really proud of that work. And again, the teachers have done an outstanding job with that and it's all integrated into Infinite Campus. Um, in the essence of time, again, I'll reiterate that Microsoft Teams, we use that constantly to. You know, to post things and to push information out to the faculty. Frontline Solutions has been another important piece of last year. Going to jump forward to goal two, which was our collaborative culture. And again, not to kind of say the same things over again, but it's really based on domain three. In the competencies in, in Barry, I think that I agree, we didn't have that chance to just make that final step at the end of the year. To say, hey, has the time that we've put into domain three really, what, what is our outcome been for this? But I can tell you, it really did give us a template in sort of a guiding set of, of principles, if you will. To drive our conversations with teachers when we met with teachers. Teachers came in, they knew what we were going to talk about ahead of time. And it focused on instruction. A quick overview of those four domains. The first one is about the classroom environment and student engagement. The second one is about planning for instruction and the third is about actually delivering the instruction. And then the fourth one is professional responsibilities. So three seem to make the most sense to us. It kind of had the highest value for us to pursue that. So again, more work on that. That should be ongoing every year for, for any school really, because it's all about instruction. We participate in our diagnostic testing, fall, winter and spring. We were able to do the fall and the winter. We use a tool called STAR for language arts and we use a tool called I Ready for mathematics. We house that data. We kind of look at that data to see if it's consistent with the internal assessments that we give. This year, we're giving more interim assessments that the state puts out. So we're using those. So we can kind of triangulate our data. We could, last year, we were working on three data points on internal, on that screening and then the Sback tests. So obviously we didn't have the Sback test last year for that third data point. So hopefully we will in the future. Again, we keep all of the My Learning Plan data. That's all housed in My Learning Plans. So that data is there. Another really great initiative we had for goal two was the eighty percent of our faculty was able to observe their colleagues either within Eastline Middle School. Or within the district, whether they went down to the elementary school or up to Deb's school over at the high school. And that's been really great. The feedback that we've had from that wasn't my idea, wasn't an original idea. The high school came up with it. They talked about it. I guess it was last year, a year before, just about what you can learn when you go in another colleague's classroom. And it doesn't need to be the same subject. And I actually encourage people to not necessarily go, if you're a math teacher, don't go in a math room. Go in a science classroom and see how they integrate math and the science. So that's been outstanding. We want to, it's hard to. Continue that. Now we're trying to honor our cohorting. And I talked already about the school improvement plans. Okay, I'll be quick. So I'm sorry I'm taking all the time. We're just really proud of what our school does here. As Danielle said, the Devro Student Strengths Assessment, we do use that data. What's great about that data, we meet every two weeks. In a team called a Student Life Team. And that's our school counselors, it's our social worker Mario, it's our two school psychologists, our nurse comes, our security person comes. Jen and Claudine, the assistant principals come as well. And we talk about kids. And we talk about, really, in all honesty, we talk about what's not going well and how we can improve that. So the DESSA data was important. Another thing that we do there, and we have this really interesting data, we have three and a half years of longitudinal data. Of every crisis intervention form that we've ever filled out at Eastline Middle School. And we share that grade eight data with Deb and her team at the high school at the end of the year. So those kids go, so the counselors and her professional team there. Has a good understanding what our kids are going through a crisis situation. has a good understanding when our kids are going through a crisis situation. The team at the high school is already, um, cognizant of what that has been like. So we've used that data, we've tracked that data by male, female, we've tracked that data by grade level, we've tracked that data by time of year, by time of day. Whether it was a two-one-one call, whether it was a DCF call, you name it, we try to capture that data because now that data starts to tell a story for us. And that's been incredible data for us. And it's really, sometimes social and emotional can be hard to capture because sometimes it's not as quantifiable as you might think. So that's been a big initiative for us. And again, really proud of that team for the conversations they have based around that, that information. Um, just a couple more. As I said before, our MTSS process does include, really important point, does include that social emotional data. We've also, um, as you know, the work, I won't talk much about it, but the Castle Competencies. Our counselors now for this year, just so you know, send out a monthly newsletter with resources to hit one of the, whether it's self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, those are all the competencies. And the counselors give the teachers the tools to kind of drive those conversations into their everyday instruction. So it's nothing that should be happening in isolation. It should be happening every day. Um, and we started that initiative last year. So let's see. That's it. Sorry, I took a little bit of extra time there, but again, really proud of our school and what we're doing. Any questions? I'm happy to answer those. Any questions for Jason? Nice job. Wow. Okay, yeah, Kate, I, oh, I'm sorry. I, let's see, I see Kate and then Candace, okay?
I don't really have any questions, just, uh, congratulations and kudos. I think it's the enthusiasm shows with all of our administrators and I love how you guys give credit to your faculty when I know that you're the energizing force behind what happens and just really building it and building it better. So, and I like all the data collection that you're doing and I think that you're right, it does tell a story. I think just feedback though, for us as listeners, it would be helpful next time if you could do some screen sharing so that we could see, like, I have some personal experience working in those different domains and understanding it. But it's not at the top of my head, but you know, to be able to look back and forth and see what you're saying and see what you're referring to would be helpful as a, as an audience or participant.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're reading our mind, Kate, for, for the future. Yeah, we're just trying to kind of give that over, quick overview of, you know, some of the work from nineteen twenty. We will definitely, you know, much more involved as we move into next year.
Got it. You, you guys are doing great. Appreciate it.
Candace?
Thanks, Tim. I have no question. I just want to thank you all for being such incredible champions. Um, and when I listen to you speak, um, it, it's why you have such respect and, and the following and love that the teachers have for you and the faculty within your schools. You're incredible. Thank you.
Very good. Barry?
Just, um, going back to the elementary schools and to Jason, I will hold any comments about going to the future, but I just want to say that you guys have many, many processes that you're putting into the instructional, um, increasingly instructional opportunities for kids. And I just want to recognize that and give you kudos to that and don't want to make sure that any comments I make are not taken as, uh, criticisms or denegrations of anything, of all the positive things that you're doing.
Good. Excellent. Excellent. So let's see, we're going to hear, hear from the high school next?
Yes, Mrs. Kelly kind of inherited, but it is a lot of work with the team last year, uh, Mr. Sushi departed, but Deb will turn it over to you.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. I'm going to do my best to, uh, share with you what I learned from what we did as well as what I know we did, um, as I pulled things together. And I apologize ahead of time, some of it's a little repetitive when you're third person up. Um, our focus with, with the, the first goal was on, um, first of all, we have been using Infinite Campus for a few, couple, few years already. So our focus after, um, pretty intense summer, uh, professional development was to do it even better. Um, so we started by piloting the, the use of digital behavior referrals so that teachers literally could put in a referral from their desk and rather than fill out a piece of paper, bring it to someone else. Again, we had no idea how much we would need to know how to do this as we went forward. Um, but we did professional development on that and we, we piloted that and by mid-year, most of the faculty was using it because it was easy and pretty convenient. Um, we also established expectations with the teachers, kind of honed in on very specific expectations on using how they, how to use the gradebook and the attendance. And we, um, started running reports to actually be able to give them some feedback on what that looked like from a parent's perspective as well as from our perspective and try to make sure that we were getting on a more consistent place with that. We also trained our school counselors. There's a whole, uh, area in Infinite Campus that's focused for school counselors. So we did that. And we were in the beginning stages of trying to integrate our SRBI forms and everything into Infinite Campus when we ended up closing. We did use, uh, one of the other things we learned about Infinite Campus is that they have some built-in professional development modules. And we use that quite a bit with, um, our teachers during PD days as well as our administrative assistants. Again, to learn a little bit more about the intricacies of, um, Infinite Campus. And then as far as, um, communication is concerned, we had been using it somewhat. We've been using Google Classroom a long time. So we really kind of encouraged the teachers and tried to outline for them, the Google Classroom was going to be the means of communication with students. And Infinite Campus was going to be our means of communication with parents. And we worked with both the teachers and the, um, administrative assistants in the building to kind of decide where all that communication was coming from and how it was going to be posted. So we did that. And we reached out to parents as much as we could too, to try to make sure that they were using the Infinite Campus the way that, um, as well as they possibly could. By, first of all, um, at back to school night, we had set up, uh, opportunities for them to sign in and do demonstrations, not just on Infinite Campus, but also on Naviance. Naviance is our college and career software that we use. Um, and it's great, very valuable tool, especially as you get into junior and senior year. And then, um, we also, our instructional tech person spent quite a bit of time working with our faculty to, um, explore things like NearPod. And we started using Newsella and other curriculum-based software. Fortunately, we did a bunch of that at the beginning of the year because as everyone else has said, when we got to the end of the year, although I will say that the faculty at the high school was not all that wild about teams at first, it became basically their source of communication for a few months and they are bought into it much more now. So, um, they're using teams. They're using, um, Zoom, obviously, and, uh, using it not just to communicate with each other, but to collaborate. There's quite a bit of collaborative space in there, um, for all of our, um, faculty to use. Um, so I'm really impressed that that's moved into. I was worried that we'd come into this year and that that would kind of go away. But, um, it hasn't. That, that actually has grown a little bit this year, so I'm excited about that. Our second goal for collaborative culture is a little different than the other schools. We, we did start, we did continue doing, and we've been doing this for a few years, where the teachers were expected to do learning walks where they would observe other teachers. And by mid-year, everyone had done one, if not two. In this past year, we encouraged them to do it. As, um, Jason said, not just within their department, but really go outside of their department. We actually pushed some of our support people to do this too, to, to actually sit in classrooms to get a, uh, student's perspective as they're talking to students about what's going on in some of the classes. And I think that went over really, really well. Um, our teachers continued to meet in PLCs and they, to help develop their curriculum. Um, we had all of our, with teachers that needed to be wherever they were in the curriculum cycle, worked on all of that. And then, um, our big thing in this area was a focus on the vision of the graduate. So as I think you all know, um, we have our NIES visit next year. As part of our NIES, um, evaluation, one of the things that we have to do is develop a vision of the graduate. So that took a good chunk of our year. Some of you were involved in the, uh, work that we did last fall where we took the Fall Professional Development Day and opened up an opportunity for all stakeholders, community members, parents, board of ed, um, teachers, administrators to come in and learn a little bit about what the vision of the graduate is and have some input into what that looks like. We took all that information from the fall and kind of crunched some things and worked with the CIL group, um, to come up with what our actual vision of the graduate is. And I, I'm guessing that that's something we should probably, I don't know how much you guys already know about that. Um, because that kind of came to fruition in the spring. And then when we closed, because we have to use the vision of the graduate, um, along with the mastery-based diploma assessment that the state of Connecticut requires for graduation. We had a team of, uh, teachers continue to meet virtually to help develop a process for that. And, and that's been, that continues into this year. So we, we, because we did develop a process, but it's been kind of on hold until we're actually able to, uh, utilize the, the time, it's time right now that we don't really have, um, especially through advisory and through some of the classes. So that work went through July, really. Um, and as I said, we have a process in place for the mastery-based diploma assessment. It's all based on the vision of the graduate. And it includes goals around equity and inclusion and social emotional learning and, um, in instructional pathways, committee is also part of what we're doing with that. And that, that's, that's actually some pretty exciting work that we're picking up again at this point in time. And then for goal three, uh, we did, we, last year was the first year that the high school did the DESA um, administration because it's brand new to high schools. So we were able to do the, um, fall and winter assessment and literally we're in the process of taking a look at what that data looks like and having some conversations about, well, what do we do with this now that we have it when we closed? So we've just done it again this year and, um, I think we have some ideas of how we're going to try to incorporate some social emotional learning, as Jason said, you know, right within the classroom, just part of what we do every day. Uh, and that's something that we're going to continue to be working on through this year with some little mini PDs. And then we had, um, our, we had a big focus last year on mental health. Uh, we had, working with the grant that we got from the United Way, we trained all of the counselors, social workers, school psychologists to implement the, um, signs of suicide curriculum. And they delivered that in every single freshman academy class. And that was a pretty intense period of time, not just for the training part of it, but all of the follow-up. And, um, that's something that we had hoped to again, continue this year, but it's just not the right curriculum to do virtually. So we'll pick that up again next year. We also, um, have been working with the Jordan Corko Foundation for the last couple of years and implementing, uh, curriculum called For What's Next, which is implemented in senior academy. And it's designed to help kids with some of the, um, kind of SEL competencies as they go forward from high school and into college. So our social worker, and it was Emily's first year with us last year, she worked with the teachers from the, um, the senior academy classes to implement that. And we were able to get that done in the fall and then it was supposed to happen in April, but it didn't. Uh, we also made sure all of our faculty was QPR trained. Um, and we've continued to do quite a bit of work with the district, um, SEL committee. We have a very strong presence in the SEL committee world. Um, and that, that's, that's our summary.
Great. Jeff, uh, are any questions for Deb? High school? Okay. Jeff, anything more?
It just, uh, you know, let Kim, Amy, uh, Kim and I just kind of do a quick, you know, synopsis, you know, as you look at the district improvement plan, it really encompasses, you know, all of, all the plans. And, you know, I just, I want to just give a kudos, you know, to our administrative team, you know, and our staff, you know. They, uh, they poured their heart and soul into a lot of work last year. Um, it got abruptly ended. This is a good exercise for us to circle back uh, and kind of think about this, uh, and how, you know, many of these items that you're hearing, you know, are going to hyperjump us into, you know, next year. Um, and, you know, the use of teams, you know, was brought up. Uh, we, we, people were skeptical and, and we had just started using teams. Uh, and kudos to Amy for pushing us on that and bringing that really forward. Um, thank goodness we had it in place uh, because it has been a savior. Uh, so we, big piece of, you know, our, our work this year. Um, the, the deployment, you know, the building-based devices and, and student devices, you know, that is going to be the bread and butter of a lot of the efforts and the work that, you know, we put in place and, uh, and we identify in our, you know, our goals and improvement plans, you know, moving forward. So, uh, just a lot of, you know, a lot of great things still happened, um, in the midst of, you know, a crazy, uh, end of, uh, last year. So we're just looking forward to moving forward. Amy and Kim, follow-up points?
Yeah, so I'll just follow up in hoping, I think one of the things, you know, you, you could look at the sheets and you can, you can hear it. But once you hear it again and really listen, one of the charges that I had when I came in the district was to basically make us a district um, and have us have alignment and have us sort of steer our energy. And I think that's one of the things that as I was really listening to the principals talk, um, really joining together towards some goals. So I really do feel like as an administrative group and, you know, Barry, you had mentioned this in regards to outcomes, I feel like we're in a great position to, um, really look at our efforts because we are together as a team um, within these efforts and really want to collaborate and do this together, not as isolated buildings as um, it was at one time. And then the other piece I hope that you heard is, you know, we really are gaining some nice structures around instruction. You know, we're really trying to support a coaching cycle. We're trying to support these ongoing conversations around instruction and student their, their data points and their benchmarks and, and sort of holding ourselves accountable, but also supporting teachers visiting each other and having collaborative conversations, whether it be at the grade level or department level. So I do feel like structurally, we're in a, we're in a really good place to promote some really great change and provide some solid reflection over this time in the pandemic and just really just continue moving us forward. Um, and, um, I guess I'm feeling a sense of pride to listen to everybody. Um, I don't know that we realized how much we've pulled off in basically six months before a pandemic. Um, so ju-just hoping that, you know, those points were heard as the principals were reflecting and what we feel we accomplished at the district level. So Kim, I'll pass it over to you.
Sure. Thanks, Amy. Um, good evening, everyone. I think that, you know, it, it was really impressive, you know, I feel like I don't have a lot to share because basically with goal three, you know, from a district point of view, we set the stage and you could hear from each building's perspective how they operationalized um, and implemented those things around student-centered learning and specifically around social emotional um, learning and, and beginning to understand what that means for students, how to incorporate that in the classroom. And every building had their own take on that, but there are all common threads in terms of using the DESA as a universal screener. Um, you know, there, the website that the, the DESA is housed on called Aperture Education has resources and tools that are aligned to Castle. And so we train teachers on accessing that, um, availability. And, you know, social emotional learning is not exactly the same as learning to teach kids how to read because there's a piece of it where you have to be a little bit at peace with your own social emotional well-being in order to translate that into working with the students. And so giving teachers and staff time and space to, um, explore that without a lot of pressure, but to maintain that expectation. I think you hear that coming through in each of the building plans as well. So, um, yeah, a lot went into last year before we sort of had to pivot and focus our energies in a different direction. But as you can see, we're, we haven't lost sight of those things. We're still committed to those initiatives. Um, and, you know, furthering our knowledge as, um, you know, educators in moving those things forward. So, um, it was, it really reaffirming, I think, to see that what was put out as a district plan, you know, had really consistent through lines at each of our five buildings. So, um, I think it's impressive to, to be a part of setting the stage and then seeing it, you know, play out. So, thank you.
Good, good. Very excellent, excellent. I was just, I just want to make one comment and that was, um, I'd personally like to thank Barry, uh, Checkley, who was, um, instrumental in kind of saying, hey, we should do this. Yeah, Barry, they came, you, you raised the point up, I think it was a little meeting that you had, we had with you and, uh, and with Jeff. And, uh, you said that, um, you suspected that if, if they were to stand back and reflect on what they have accomplished, uh, during this very strange time period, um, that it actually would be pretty good vibe. And I, you know, I could really see a lot of energy and enthusiasm uh, from all of the, uh, administrative staff as they kind of reflected on, on what, what they have accomplished. And I think it's really wonderful. So Barry, thank you very much for, for, uh, giving us a, a push, uh, to have somebody make this occur. I think it's really worthwhile. Jeff?
Yeah, that's, that's about it, um, right there for the improvement plan. So, um, thanks for kind of taking the time to, to listen to, you know, that information and that data.
And we'll be hearing, um, uh, game plans for how we pull together the plans for the upcoming year.
That's our work for, uh, for March. Yeah, rather than, you know, typically in the past, we've done most of that work over the summer and then brought in, you know, the school improvement teams and, um, into the fall. We, we want to get a head start on that. And, you know, we, it's been a long year. Um, I think we get out of the gate with that early, we'll be able to kind of fine tune in the summer and then be ready to roll out. So that's our game plan. So we're looking forward to definitely for some further conversations in March.
Okay, great, great. Everybody ready to move? Everybody ready to move on, carry on? Okay. So let's see, where are we here? Okay, the next, next item up is the Eastline Superintendent's proposed budget for 2021, 2022. And Jeff?
Yeah, an important, yeah, thanks, Tim. An important piece that we wanted to make sure we cashed and just had a little bit of conversation about tonight was the C I P plan. Chris Lund did an immense amount of work on drafting this plan up, not only for next year, but for, you know, the, the 10 years out and really, you know, honing in, identifying and a lot of our issues. Oftentimes, as we know, facilities gets pushed to the back. And we want to make sure, and, and we've, in the past years, we've sometimes even kind of forgotten about C I P and it just kind of gets pushed forward. We can't do that. So we wanted to give Chris some airtime tonight to just kind of walk us through some of the C I P items, you know, for next year. And maybe, Chris, I know time is tight here, the meeting's been long, but just, you know, a little bit of a quick vision on, you know, the facilities and some of the things you're seeing and things we need to be focused on. So we'll start there and then we can turn it over and have some further conversations about the overall budget.
Okay, so I won't go through every one of the next 10 years suggested projects, I guess is what you're saying.
Yes, please do.
I won't do that. So, okay, so about 18 months into my stint here, and of course, we've had some interesting things, including some renovation projects, which we're still punching out the last of the punch lists. And we, you know, along the way, added some additional work there, which wasn't included in the budget. So in general, as you would expect, the elementary schools are in really good shape. And it's time to turn our attention to the middle school and the high school. The middle school itself, as you know, or may know, is coming up or has just approached its 20th birthday. So what that means in addition to extra candles on the cake is it's time to really start looking at the roofs and of course, the mechanical equipment. Much of those mechanical equipment really are, you can expect a life from 15 to 25 years. And generally with the roof, you're looking at 20 years. So that's the emphasis over at the middle school and the high school, where you have multiple wings there, you have roof issues to be addressed. In the A wing, you have windows that are single pane original installation that probably have an R value of about one, which means they are totally inefficient. And of course, we have doors and just the grounds itself with asphalt, pavements, sidewalks and whatnot. So the program for next year is heavy on what I thought were the main issues that we need to get going, which were pretty much all those issues I just mentioned. Within the budget that you received was the C I P. And we briefly talked about just points of it last meeting. It has, of course, all of the main programs for next year. And we can go through those if you have questions on them. I think they're pretty well self explanatory and I know where time is limited, but if you want to hit any specific one, we can. At the end of that, that's, that book that you received also was the first draft of the 10 year plan. And the point I would make on that, which I talked to Jeff about is right now, I'm in the midst of completing an R F Q for consultant engineers. I'm looking to bring on an architect and also an M E P F, which would be consult engineer that deals with mechanical, electrical plumbing and fire protection. So all those systems that we have to start addressing, the mechanical systems, the HVAC and whatnot. What that will do is it's a vetted process. Mariana, of course, did address the questions, but it's the equivalent of going out to bid and bringing on a consultant that in turn, as these projects come up, which are outside of, you know, my ability, my specialty or just my time, we can issue them a task order and they can go right out and put together the plans and specs and, and also the estimates. So what I plan to do with a lot of this work, particularly the bigger projects, is I'm looking to do in year one of multi-year plans or multi-year projects is to get the designs done, the engineering done and a good cost estimate. And then I can break that estimate up over a couple of years so that we're not trying to do $2 million HVAC renovation at the middle school or trying to do entire winter, entire building windows at the high school. So that's the plan going forth. I've been getting some good help from Town Public Works helping me to vet those consultants. We went through the initial reviews. We scored them, we're going to try to interview via Zoom, of course, in the next couple of weeks. So that by the end of March, we'll have those folks on contract so that I can start moving forward with all the work that we would like to get done. Of course, you know, a school in many ways is like my experience being on a ship. You know, summer is when the ship's tied up and time to do the work. So we're in pushing to get a lot of work done at those two schools this year. And not a lot will be going on at the elementaries in the next couple of years, which I'm sure will make everybody happy. That's my quick introduction. Like I said, if there are specific questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions for Chris? Jamie?
Mine isn't a question so much as I just wanted to reflect on the fact that I've been here 13 years. And the capital improvement plan you put forth is the best one I have ever seen come out of your office. It's detailed, it's thoughtful, it's organized and it's forthcoming on all the projects that we actually need. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thank you, Jamie.
Appreciate that.
Very good. I had, Chris, I had one, just one, one question, the solar panels on the high school. What, I'm sure they're, they're getting older. You have a game plan on those?
So the solar panels, so I looked into that, you know, when I first got here. And actually, they're not quite as old as we would think. So it's a 20 year contract with the provider. We're at year 10, so we're only halfway through it. Yeah, unfortunately, the, well, unfortunately, what I have to do with the array in order to take care of some of the roof problems at the high school is I'm going to need to move it. When we get to it prematurely, unfortunately, it just, you know, you try to line those things up, but you know, put it the array on the new roof or plan to take it off when the roof needs to be done. And unfortunately, that didn't occur. So there'll be a cost to move them out of the way to do the work and reinstall them. But not, hopefully not too significant.
Thank you.
But another 10 years.
Yep, good. Jeff, turn it back to you.
I, I want to thank Chris as well. You know, the combination, the team between, you know, Mariana and Chris has just been, you know, phenomenal. And I think it's moved our facilities forward. So thank you, Chris. Want to make sure we just have given him some airtime on that C I P work. So with that, I know, you know, the bulk of our discussion, you know, on, on the budget, we can open up or reopen up. Did receive a few questions over the weekend. Jamie, thank you. We're working on, you know, responding to a few of those over some line items. But I, I don't have anything else to kind of share out. We've kind of, we've had a couple of meetings now. Just want to open it up for, for further discussion. And, you know, our planning and timeline would be to, at the next meeting in February, the second meeting in February, you know, kind of do a mini public hearing to see if we get any feedback, you know, from additional feedback from, from parents. Give them an opportunity to hear that and then hopefully move forward with the adoption of the budget.
I just have a quick question on the, any type of commentary that's coming in about the budget, whether or not it's in support or not in support. Is it something that you're going to provide on the website for a link or no?
Yeah, we, we can. It's, what we received is in, so far is, was in the public comment tonight. But we can, I can add those to the website if we want to have a, you know, a link where, you know, public feedback is on there and tied in with, you know, a, a public hearing for next week.
I think it's a good area. I know from last, last budget season, I just think that that Q and A is, you know, good for reference. But then also I know that the Board of Finance did it and I know for myself that was very beneficial. So I just think that's really a great thing.
Yep, very good suggestion. Excellent, excellent. Anybody, anybody else? And again, any questions or comments or, you know, as you, as you look at it again or whatever, please pass them directly into Jeff. And so on the 22nd, we'll be, be hearing any additional public comments and we'll, we'll be hopefully taking board action on the, on the proposed budget. So that's the, that will be the game plan. We're all set. Let's move on to the update on COVID district expenses, cost projections and grant funding.
Yeah, we, we attached it again. Mariana, no, we talked briefly today, but no real changes. We just recently, you know, shown it to you, but wanted to make sure to reference again. And Holly Cheeseman had brought up at the beginning of the meeting, additional S R funds. Those are good for two years. So funds we really kind of want to be looking at, you know, for next year and the year after, definitely summer programming. I kind of give you the parameters around, you know, what we could use those for, you know, my weekly update. But there still is the need for us, given, you know, the, the COVID expenses and that bottom line of, what was it about, by January, 1.2 million? You're really going to ask for that 500,000 that we returned to the town last year in an appropriation to utilize this year. And that, that would, that would be it. Initially, early in the year, we thought we'd have to go back for more or ask for more. We, we should not have to do that. We should be fine with just requesting that 500,000 to help us offset all of those COVID costs from this year. Mariana, anything to add on that?
No, and just the, I'm not sure if I noted it on the sheet, but the Corona relief funds, the 294,735, I filed that and we've already received the money. So we have that, so we're all set. And then we're just waiting for the, the application for that S R two that that Holly was talking about.
We have a Board of Finance meeting on Wednesday night of this week. So we wanted to just unofficially, you know, broach them about, you know, that idea and timeline for, you know, that appropriation, but obviously wanted to have conversation here at the board level first.
Yeah, Barry? Nope, still on mute.
Is this taxpayers' money or is this federal money?
Which one, Barry? What, we would go back for the appropriation on?
Yeah, I mean, this whole budget has, there's a bottom line in here someplace about how much money we're asking. Is this town money or is this federal money? When you get to, you know, you're talking about the $1 million.
Yeah, it's, it's town money. I mean, it's, it's expense, over expenses that we would be going back to ask for taxpayer dollars that we had not used last year and we gave back that they put into the general fund. And we would ask them to release that back to us to cover these COVID costs.
Them still, I guess I'm going to have to defer on this. The cost of the Zoom licenses in here, I'll bring that up and we'll talk about that at another time.
Okay. Good. Okay, anything else on that? On that, I'm so, so you'll be sharing this with the Board of Finance on Wednesday? Just to kind of officially really start the dialogue, the conversation around where we are, where we believe we are for this year with the, the cost overages due to COVID. And, and we'll be getting their, their discussion, their feedback on that as well. If it turns out that they, they think that the reallocating the $500,000 that we gave back to them was a good, is, is an appropriate way to go, we'll come, that'll come, you'll come back to the board and we'll officially request that. So we wanted just to have a dialogue with the Board of Finance on exactly where we stood with all of these expenses. And that was what, basically, we had promised back in, I think it was like November, that February was the timeframe that we would be coming, coming forward because we'll have enough data to have a pretty good projection as to where we'll be with respect to the cost overages. Okay? All right, should we move on? Let's see, where are we here? Next item is planetarium facility usage. Jeff, I guess, I see there's a little letter.
Yeah, we, we had held an ad hoc committee meeting with members of Stars to STEM. Good discussion. And basically, we just, we'll recommend that the board, you know, continue to hold the space for them. And by issuing them the letter, it allows them to continue to work to, to raise funds, you know, for that, that plan. Any members of the ad hoc committee, Eric or other members, you know, any additional thoughts? That's pretty much it, I think.
Yeah, I think we had a, you know, just to summarize, we had a really good discussion with, with the team and with Stars to STEM. And, you know, they talked about what they need to do to get to the next step, which would be being able to get the portable projectors so that they can actually start something, even if it's before they get to the final place where they're actually in our fixed site and stuff. So, you know, they have a plan. It's, it's challenging times fundraising with COVID. So, you know, I think they're looking at timelines, but they're going to start, you know, getting to us on a, I can't remember if we said monthly or quarterly, but we're going to get updates from them. And so we'll kind of keep it on our radar, but we, we, we do recommend us approving. But I'll, Lee and John, I don't know if you have more to add.
I think the only other update that we found really helpful and probably should share with the full board is it was clarified, I know in previous meetings, we had discussed whether or not Eastline students are, you know, the district would be required to pay for programming and use of Stars to STEM resources. And they confirmed during our ad hoc meeting that Eastline would not be required to, to pay for programming. So I thought that would be a helpful update, given I know there was a lot of back and forth on that the last time we met.
Okay.
Good point, thank you.
Kate?
I'm, I'm wondering, is the room in use currently, the planetarium, is it still resource room or what?
Yeah, yes, yep, it's still, still being used by students and some staff members.
Okay, good.
Yeah, okay, so I guess no one, I mean, everybody okay with it being kind of held in, in, for another year for this potential usage? Everybody's good with that? So I guess we have, the sound looks like we've had board consensus on this. So I think that that's, that's good. So you can just say that the board has reached, reached again consensus on holding the planetarium for another year for Stars and Stems. Have that in the minutes. Okay, moving along, we're, we're, we've got two more items here. The first, next one is a discussion on the, it's a debrief on the diversity, equity and inclusion draft plan that we took a look at and buried presented to us at our last meeting. Jeff, do you have any, anything that you want to update us on?
It's just that we're going to be taking this and sharing out to the district wide committee. That's scheduled, their meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We brought that forward so we could spend some time having some discussions about that with the, the full district, full district committee. Next, and I'll talk about the audit in a minute, that's the next item.
Yeah, and I thought Jamie and Barry, I think the work that you've done with fixing up some of the language and getting it consistent, that the document reads very well, I think. I think it's very clear and nice job, a really good job. Barry?
Just one talking point, and I read the comments that came back in from the people that submitted letters. I think a talking point or as we discuss this, one of the stories or examples that came out within, as I was reading all this diversity, equity and inclusion stuff, related to a third grader in a school in California. She had cerebral palsy, is in a wheelchair, couldn't talk, can't use her arms, can't walk. And, but she was brought in mainstreamed into the classroom. The teacher talked with the classroom about like how to include her as an equitable member of the class. And the kids got together and instead of putting her kind of in the back corner with her own work, they brought her out and put her in the middle of the classroom, circled all the desks around her. And individual students would get up and they included her in reading and they found out how to communicate with her and questions. You know, she couldn't talk, but they could ask her, you know, is it this or that? And she would slap their hands and they would get responsive like that. So I thought that was a, a kind of a great spirit of the type of issue that I think we're trying to incorporate into our schools with the breadth of reference to ISMs that are possible. We just want to try to set the, our schools up so that at every grade level, we can get into discussions about what are the issues of who is being, how can we be, who is diverse and how can we include them and provide an equitable educational experience for all of them? And I think that's kind of the heart of the plan that I, I saw. And I think that's kind of the heart of the plan that, uh, I, I saw when I was trying to write it up. And I hope that we can use talking points like that when we're trying to communicate to people like, you know, what are we trying to do with this? There's like, there's a measured breadth.
Okay, good. And, and again, I encourage board members to take another look at the, uh, draft plan. Um, and if you have any comments or whatever, just, um, submit them directly into, uh, to our superintendent and he'll pass them along into the ad hoc committee that's been working, working on this. And it'll be good to see, it'll be good to see, um, the input from the, uh, district wide committee, um, and getting their feedback on, on it as well. So, uh, I think that that's, uh, it's, uh, moving, moving along nicely.
Yeah, we'll keep the board informed on that after tomorrow's meeting. That's kind of where we stand and can bring, bring back to the next meeting.
Good, good. Um, that brings us to the next item, which is a district wide equity audit, um, which was one of the act, one of the items that has, was identified, actually identified way back in the, in the summer as something that we might consider, um, doing. And, uh, so the ad hoc committee has been, uh, working, um, looking, looking for various venues and so on to, to help us with this. And, uh, I get, we've kind of, uh, developed one, uh, with the Equity Institute proposal. And Jeff, you want to, you and, you and Barry have been spearheading this, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I, I'm excited about this because this is really kind of the, the first piece of, of the work to, to do a, a overall district audit. Um, and, and we've already talked about, but those who haven't heard, you know, for this outside, uh, unbiased, you know, uh, group, organization to come in, uh, and survey, uh, survey parents, survey staff, survey students, uh, and give us a baseline on kind of where we are, you know, as a district. Uh, they've done it frequently and done it with other districts. Uh, I'm in the process of kind of finishing up and finalizing the references, uh, reference checks on them. But so far I'm hearing nothing but great things, uh, about their work. They cut their costs at half for us. Um, and I just, I, I, I'm excited about, you know, by the end of this year, we would have that, that baseline to, to kind of gauge, okay, what now do we need to do and prep ourselves and, you know, preparation for next year? So, uh, that's kind of where we, you know, where we, where we stand. Um, but very important to have that outside vendor kind of coming in and taking a look rather than us trying to do it ourselves.
Eric, you got your hand up? Question?
Yeah, I was just, I'm just trying to understand, like, what will the result report look like or say? Not, not that we, I'm not looking for what the answer will be because they'll have to do that. But is it going to say kind of how we rank versus other schools or things that we should be doing or things? Kind of what's the biases that exist in our community? What? I, I just don't know what the, like, what are we going to get at the end of this?
Barry, do you want to, you want to answer that?
Let me try to take that on quickly, Eric. Um, if you look at the issue that all the isms that we refer to are, uh, social constructs that are reinforced by environmental cues in our, in our schools. If we tried to take a look at ourselves because we socially construct all those isms and, uh, we construct the environmental cues that reinforce and sustain them, we're blind to them. So all we want to do is have somebody coming outside who doesn't have the same, uh, social construction we do and are maybe have, um, can see through the environmental cues that we put up in our schools to say, here's what the picture looks like from an outsider, because they're going to come in and do an interview and say, all right, focus groups, you know, like, kind of what's happening, you know, are you included? Are you excluded? Uh, what's the range of diversity? What do you mean by that? And, uh, kind of what do you, as I said, as I talked to them, they are going to really surface what we see as our own social construction of all these isms. And what are environmental cues that we present up to sustain them? And then bring that back as a mirror to us and say, is this really what you want?
Exactly. Well said, Barry. Yep.
Yeah, that, thank you. That, that's helpful. So will we, we're going to get, I guess, some ideas, some things about maybe areas we're doing well, areas where, you know, can, can focus on, and then maybe some things that we're not even aware kind of permeates our, our district or something like that. Is that, I think that's what you were saying, Barry.
Yes, we're going to get, uh, it's a mirror. They're going to come back for us to look into and say, we're going to look at this. And then that information's going to go down to the, uh, the grade level, the school level and the district level teams to say, is this the picture we want to re, you know, sustain for ourselves or hear issues? If these are the issues, um, how are we going to address them? You know, if it's, uh, back to that example, when the teacher went back to those students to say, you know, what are we going to do with the cerebral policy student that are in the classroom? Here's what we can do to make this more, uh, accept this diversity and make it more inclusive and equitable for her instruction.
Thanks, Barry. That, that's helpful. I wasn't sure if it was just, we're going to get a bunch of numbers and data, which could we do on our own or whatever, but, but it's, it's really those, those insights that they're seeing. That's the independent lens that they, they will have that will get some benefit. So thank you. That's really helpful.
I suspect, Eric, that we'll see some things on, on their feedback, um, that will say, well, we knew that. Or, or well, that's, you know, that's, that's pretty obvious. We're really, we're doing it to make sure that, that there's things that are out there that we're just, we're just, we, we don't realize that we're blind to them. Um, and that, that's really the, the major point of it. And, uh, it, it looks like, it looks like that it'd be a, it'll be a worthwhile thing to do. Um, Anis, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so that's, that's one of the benefits, right? For having the outside third party doing that to kind of mirror from the outside looking in, right?
Yep.
Kind of like, all right. So what is the actual price? Because you said that they came down a significant amount.
Yeah, it's down to, uh, for, and this is, uh, starting in, uh, really later in February, we sign on. And it would go for, you know, months into, you know, the remainder of the school year, uh, down to 15,000.
Okay, so, uh, total, it's 15,000?
From 30, from 35,000 is where they were.
Okay. So is there, is there a con to doing this? Because I did read one of the letters that came in for the public comment. I mean, is there, is there a, is there a con for doing it? I, I just don't see it. So that's why I don't understand.
I, I don't either. I don't know why you wouldn't necessarily want to take a look at your district, um, from an outside, you know, point of view as to, you know, the work that we want to engage in.
All right. I don't really understand what, what would the hesitation be unless maybe somebody is afraid of what's going to come back. I mean, I don't know. I guess, I, I mean, I, I think that it's a good thing. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Question to ponder.
Question by, I suspect, I suspect that, yeah, it's just one of those things where you, you, you don't know what you don't know. Um, so that's, that's all like, Barry, go ahead.
Very quick comment on that one, Candace. I, I read that letter too, uh, very carefully. And I think that there was a slight, um, misunderstanding of our reference to the background that we're using. Um, because they said that, you know, it, uh, they made that reference to that particular framework simply as a way to say it's, reinforces the idea, it's really good to have an outside or come in, taking a look at your, your situation because they don't, the outsider does not have the same environmental cues and the same social constructs that you do within your own framework. And so I think that it's not like we wanted, uh, we have a particular agenda on this, but we just want to be very open about taking this look at ourselves.
Well, so, well said. Well said. So I think that the ad hoc committee is, uh, would very much highly recommends, uh, moving forward with, with.
Jamie has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jamie, go ahead.
Hi, sorry. So, um, a couple of questions, actually. Um, do we not have an in-state local person that could do this?
There's different organizations, Jamie. Um, this one came, uh, pretty highly rated, uh, the conversations we've had. And again, the references that we've, uh, we've, we've done so far, that I've done so far have been very, very positive for what we're looking for. Um, so again, there's a couple of different ones out there. This is a, to me, a very good price as well from, you know, what they dropped to.
Okay. And then my second one is it says stuff about one-on-one data collection. Um, with COVID, I'm concerned about one-on-one data collection and how that would be implemented.
Virtually. Uh, that's what they've, yeah. Yep. They'd have to do things virtually.
And then sex, third, uh, the price, I don't, the price is way too much for me to be comfortable with. Um, I know we, we talk about our budget and how high it is and Barry's concerned about Zoom licensing. I'm kind of concerned about $15,000 on an equity audit. I, I, I just think that's a, a lot of money for us to be spending right now. I, I don't know if it could come from something that we already have in the budget, uh, because like we've frozen supplies, nobody's getting supplies. We have PPE still to buy. We are looking at a big budget next year. I, I, I just think it's a little steep for us to be talking about spending that with uncertainties going on right now.
Okay.
Okay.
How's everybody else? Anybody else? Where, where are we with this? Kate?
I think it's expensive, but I think for having something that would be an ongoing evaluation of our school system with five different buildings and number of faculty and staff and students, I think it's really important. I think it's our priority for the year. When you speak and hear the anecdotes and the stories of students who are recent alums or previously employed, I think it's kind of a compelling story that we kind of wake up and, and see what we can do differently, see how we can be uh, eliminating all the isms as much as we can possibly. And helping people to know that we are in a world where diversity exists. I was on a call this weekend. It was a training on Saturday for a few hours and just the word marginalized denotes the idea that we are the superior race. And we have to be careful with that and not use those marginalized statements. Marginalized in what capacity? If you look at people of color, perhaps they feel like they have more opportunity when it comes to social opportunities than what other people have. And that we sometimes are, um, again, looking at it through our own lens. And then the idea of inclusion gives the idea that we are inviting people to the table and saying that you can be included, whereas everybody should be available. And again, universal design attitudes and opinions. So I think it's penetrating and it's deep and it's, I think it's going to be very eye opening for us. I think it's going to be very valuable. And I understand the cost is, is, is formidable, but I think it's a priority.
Okay, good. Jeff, uh, did you want, did you want us to take, to, to see where the board is on, in terms of taking action on this?
So that was the intent tonight, just based off of our conversation at the ad hoc committee and, uh, you know, in the essence of trying to move forward timeline wise, um, that was where, where we had left it.
Yeah, yeah. Jamie, you got your hand up again?
Sorry, I just, is there a way to get someone from that company in to talk to us at a board meeting so we can ask them questions before we go forward on this?
Yeah, Jamie, they said they, uh, the individual we've been working with said she'd be more than happy, you know, to come and speak to the board. She's done that past. Uh, you know, we, we can do that if necessary.
Because I, I am in no way marginalizing this. This is a very important issue. I, I just, I'd like more time to think about it and for us to talk about it because it is an important issue and it is our taxpayer dollars going in there. So I just want to make sure we're doing the best for our community. So we can really get them to come in and talk to us. That would be really helpful.
I saw Bill had his hand up and then I see Lee and Eric. So let's go Bill first and then we'll, we'll hear from Lee and then Eric.
Here first. Um, no, I, I, I'm all for, um, doing an audit. I think it's a, it's the right thing to do. Um, I just feel like it would be interesting to learn more about what we're going to get. I mean, it, you know, it would be interesting to see a sample, what, you know, this is the kind of, um, thing you're going to get. I don't know if they can share a sample because of, uh, the nature of what it is, but certainly would be nice to know and, and what other school districts have used the group, what they've learned from the group, what, um, you know, what change had come about from it. I absolutely think getting an outside party in to help us, um, as, as Tim put it, learn what we, what we don't know, we don't know. Um, and I think that's really important, but it, for, it, I looked at the sheet and it looks interesting, but it would be nice to say, here's what you're getting for your $15,000.
Okay, good. No, that's good. Lee?
Yeah, I know that we had talked about this in the ad hoc committee, but, um, in engaging further, and it sounds like the board wants some more information and, and the chance to engage here a little bit further, uh, referrals from other districts that have utilized, um, a similar audit. I know that that was in progress. I'm not sure where we are with that, but I think that could be helpful to share it as well. So we can hear the experience of other districts that have engaged.
Well, let's, you know, you know, I, I, that's really well said, Lee. And I just, it, it sounds to me that, and this is very important. Okay. So if, if we do something, um, we want to make sure that the, the board completely embraces, um, that this is the right thing, this is the right thing to do. I think the money is a big part of it. It's also the quality of what information we're going to get back is really important. And so I think, I think what I'm hearing, Jeff, is I think that what we ought to do is, is schedule Carla to come, come and, uh, and do a presentation to us. Um, if we can pull it off for the 20 seconds, that would be, uh, would be great if, or if the first, first meeting in March, it will just push the timeline out, but that's, I think it's better to air to the side of quality than to, uh, than to, or to make sure that we're all, we're all on the, on the, on the right, on the right page here. So I, I just, I just interjected that. And I know, Eric, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thanks. So, um, I'll try to be quick. So, um, in complete agreement with, with Bill and Jamie were saying, and I think that they should be able to give us a redacted report of some other school districts and pull out all the key elements. So I, I like, I really like that idea. My, my original point is there's kind of two parts, points of contention that I could see where we run into, forget about the dollars. There's two parts. One is how they collect the data and then two is what we do with the data. So when they collect it, just making sure, and that kind of goes, I think, to some of the public comment is just making sure that they're doing it in a, in a way that is in a positive manner and people don't feel like they're being accused. I don't, I don't know. You could see where that goes bad. Um, if it's not done in a, in a, in the right way. And then I do think it's important for us to discuss a little bit at some point about what we do with the data. Like is, are we going to take it and say, this is the answer and we have to follow this, or we take it as another good piece of data that we utilize. I know I'm biasing with my, the way I'm saying it, but, um, what we do with the data is key. So I, I like the idea of them coming in just so we can have a little bit of a discussion with them and understand them a little bit more and get comfortable.
Okay, that's good. I'd say if Bill wanted to get something in.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I agree with what Eric's saying, but I think there's another component of it too. Um, we, we have a community here and we have a community of folks that really want to see change in the right direction. Um, and I think it's our duty to make sure that, um, we are as a board showing the community that we have done the research. We've got the right group. Um, you know, just looking back years on the, the, the elementary building school committee, we had two bits of data. We had one bit of data from one group that was way off. We had another, brought another group in, we got the right data and we went forward with the right decisions. So I, I think it's important that uh, we're showing the community that we're looking to get accurate data from a valid source. And, and we can share that by, you know, we've properly vetted them and, and know that this is, this is a group that has consistently provided good data to other districts so that we can make good decisions on that. So I think the community needs to see that we, we have done our homework and we've got the right source to, to take the collective. I hate to slow things down, but I think it's important that we, we're doing it right.
Right. That's well said, Bill. Barry, I see you had your hand up.
Defer to Candace. She was up before me.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Candace, go ahead. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Candace, go ahead. Candace? You want, did you want to say something? Nope. It shows you're on mute now. And frozen.
All right.
Okay, Barry. Yeah, go ahead.
Two quick points, Eric. I, I don't think they're going to come back with anything prescriptive. It says, you know, here are three things to do and we accept that, we don't accept. I think they're going to be descriptive things. And second, on the budget, one of the things that impressed me is that I looked at some of the other groups and they had off-the-shelf surveys that they came in. This group, much of the, their budget goes to survey development, which is a very intricate involved process. Where they're going to go out and interview people, ask questions and from that, generate the information that they bring into a survey. And they did develop some measures of psychometric properties of it. And then they're going to go out with a survey. So they're customizing a survey for our own district. And that's. And the, the development, the analysis of the data from that survey is the bulk of, is a good bulk of their, of their budget, which I think is well appropriated.
Good, okay. Candace, are you, are you with us?
There you go. I don't know what happened. I got, I went all wonky and I closed and I don't know what happened. It was awful. All right.
It was close to nine o'clock.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, and I, I missed actually everything that Barry said. I don't know why or what's happening. I hope that you guys can hear me. I like the idea of having somebody come in and talk. That way also our community can, you know, tune in and listen and hear. My question to Jeff is, is this something that maybe we can partner on with a partnering town? That they might want to look into having an audit done also? I mean, I don't know, but I just wanted to bring it up, just with the cost. I don't know if that's.
I, well, two things to that. I've already, I've shared the Equity Institute, you know, the information with Waterford already. Because they're kind of, you know, one or two steps behind us with that work. I, I don't know if we would be able to cut the cost down because of the specifics of how the audit would be formulated. And then, yeah, I mean, my, I think that'd be the issue.
All right, yeah, and I think.
Good question.
Of what, you know, has already happened. That way we can kind of look at it, but.
I will say Candace, on that note for PD, you know, next year and, and engaging our staff in PD, this speaks, could be some sharing, you know, there. As, you know, other districts are fully engaged in this work.
Okay.
So thanks, yeah.
Good, good point, good idea. Okay, so, excellent, we will, Jeff will arrange that presentation hopefully and. And the full, full board. And I think those are really all very, very good points and suggestions. So I think, nice job. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, so that concludes the discussion action items for the evening, administration reports.
Just super quick, I know it's late, as everyone knows, and tomorrow will be our first remote day. You know, we, we did our three traditional snow days. Every other district around us is either a snow day tomorrow or remote. It's still a handful of districts that are still doing the snow days. But, you know, we wanted to give teachers and parents as much ample time in preparation for that first one. And I'm worried about the weather pattern for the rest of this week is Thursday and Friday now is not looking good either, but hopefully things will calm down. So we'll see how it goes tomorrow with the first remote, remote snow day. That's about it.
Amy?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick numbers update. So right now our virtual Vikings across the district are sitting at four hundred and thirty-nine. And right now our Viking fours across the district, which are our students coming four days a week across the district are holding at five hundred and twelve. Currently, right now, we have more Viking fours than we do virtual Vikings. And I am bringing, I'm moving, I'm starting to see a trend of moving some students back into cohort A and B from virtual. So I, I'm starting to deal with those requests and supports for those students. But again, can't say enough and just want to advocate publicly while I have the forum. Please, parents, continue, reach out if there is a need, supports, reach out to those teachers, the counselors, the principals, myself. And just, we are, there is no bad question. Please ask it anyway and we are here to support you as much as possible during this time. So just to continue to message that to our parents.
Hey, Amy, can I just get a rough breakdown of what those look like across the district? Like elementary, middle, high? Do you happen to have?
I do. Hold on, I have to just pull up my chat. Hold on, because I saved it in my chat for today. Yep, let's see.
And I have a question. Is Viking four, does that mean kids that are five oh four or IUPs?
They are, so we have set criteria. They could be students with a disability, students with a five oh four plan. Students that are experiencing, have experienced a significant decline in academic achievement. Students with identified mental health and/or identified sort of urgent mental health needs. As well as students who we have seen a lack of engagement. So we have set, Kim Davis and I worked together and she did a great job with. We started with our students with disabilities, began to look at our five oh four population. And then we expanded and identified set criteria so that we are continuing to hone in on high-needs sort of groups and focal area. Points and using that same criteria, which is why I do the cohorting. Because I work with each of the building administration, but then I'm a common person that's, I'm, I don't know your student. And, you know, so I'm pretty unbiased in my conversation and it's great because it allows a really authentic conversation between parents and myself.
And what was that number again, Amy?
Uh, right now we have five hundred and twelve.
And then is the state giving us guidance on that? Because we can't identify everybody as having special needs. If everybody is missing instruction at some level and then lagging in their skills. There's going to be an overall impact on learning for everybody. So saying that five hundred and, I don't know, I'm making an up, up a number. But I think you understand my point that we're going to be identifying kids that perhaps don't have special needs. But have not had education. There's a difference.
Yeah, I think that's one of the trend data points that we're, we're trying to keep an eye on, which is sort of our, let's bring our kids back. You know, we're using that as an igniter, if you will. Sorry, Jamie, I got distracted. I'm not listening. Not losing your question. Move on from me and then I'll get back to you, Jamie, with my number.
Okay, okay. So you'll, you'll get, get those numbers to Jamie. Amy, is that the idea?
Yeah, I can, I'll, yeah, if I can pull them up before the end of the meeting, fine. If not, I'll just send you guys a quick email. No problem. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Mariana, are you there? Right, there you are.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any updates.
Okay, well, we got all the COVID stuff all set together, so good shape for the Board of Finance. So good, excellent. Okay, so that brings us to their no committee reports. That brings board comments and future agenda topics. Anybody have a comment or topic? Jamie? And then Kate?
I already did the calendar one. Policy, Jeff, since it's been canceled for Thursday, can we get another one on the books?
Yeah, good. Thank you for reminding that. Jamie, we need to get one. We haven't had one in a while. So let me, I'll work with Jackie, we'll get one scheduled.
All right, and then I'm going to say something probably not popular, but it's been bothering me for a while. So public comment. I don't think that we should be summarizing them anymore. I think we should actually be reading them. So that people do not have to go read them themselves and those, so people can actually hear what people in the public are saying. So if there's a lot like today, when there's over nineteen, maybe we could take turns reading them. But I think that they should be read in their entirety and not just paraphrased down to two sentences.
Okay, thank you. I'll see, Kate, you had your hand up.
Last, at our last meeting, it was. Candace, I believe, and Jill and perhaps Jamie as well, who suggested that we reach out to our faculty. And have some kind of a coffee or gathering. And I was thinking that, you know, as a board, perhaps we could suggest that as something to. Offer thank you to them and kudos to them for their hard work. We all know that they've worked tenaciously on behalf of our students and it hasn't been easy, but somehow arrange. You know, where we could drop off coffee and donuts or whatever and do it through Zoom. Or somehow maybe wait until the weather's a little bit nicer. But certainly I, I just wanted to follow up on that, that I really think it was a great idea. And I think if we do it as a celebratory thing and just, we, we want, we want to be there, we want to be their voice. We want to hear what their thoughts are and we want to appreciate them.
Okay, good, thank you. Anybody else? Somebody else? Barry?
It's late, I'll make these two quick. It's a request that somehow. You, Jeff, and Amy, you can bring us back. Some indication that the money we're putting into professional development is having some impact. We've been, I can go in off-record more on that, but just, you probably have some ideas that you've been investing this money. And if we go forth in the budget or something, somebody raises that question about what are we getting back in terms of student development? Or teacher development in terms of the money we're spending on professional development? That's a, it's a question we've asked many times and I think that it's incumbent on us to get that before we go forward with the budget. The second item for future discussion, I think, comes from what Deb was talking about tonight with the graduate profile. We've been talking about, when we went through all the school improvement plans, there were multiple dimensions of input variables or independent variables. There are things we're doing out, but there was not a cohesive issue about what is the outcome? What is the thing all of this is pointed towards as a district? If we could take some discussion beginning at the high school with the graduate profile. And I think, Amy, when you were saying, when the teachers were getting back to you, they highlighted executive function as the one thing that was missing in students. We could come up with some name, whether it's executive function, whether it's a graduate profile, whether it's the SEL competencies. But there's some higher order issue that we're after in the district. But if we can get that, we can bring much more focus to our school improvement plans, much more focus to our budget and much more focus to our strategy going forward. So the request is that somehow one of our next, an item for next discussion about what is that something that we are pointing at for the district?
Okay, good, very good. Anybody else?
I have the numbers.
Go ahead.
Sorry. It will save me an email, Jamie, no offense. The inbox is a little full these days. Okay. So Viking four, the total amount is five hundred and twelve. That is at the elementary, I have a hundred and ninety. At the middle school, I have a hundred and fifty-four. And at the high school, I have a hundred and sixty-eight. Okay, my virtual Vikings are four thirty-nine. And at the elementary, I have a hundred and twenty-two virtual Vikings. I have the middle school of a hundred and thirty-six. And at the high school, I have a hundred and eighty-one. And again, I can include that also in writing.
No, Amy, thank you. I was just using it in my head for the phase reopening and seeing how many kids were actually not in school that we might be getting back. Okay, thank you, Amy.
Amy, how much has that grown? The five?
The five hundred and twelve, the virtual Vikings?
Yeah, during the year, the course of the year.
Um, I have marked, well, I can put them in a chart for you, Kate, so that you'd be able to see. I usually do a dipstick, September, every month, we have a dipstick, so I can sort of show you the progression.
Okay, thank you.
I'll include it in my update on Friday.
Good, perfect. Anybody else? No? Okay. Just a comment from me, excellent, 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 long meeting, but excellent, excellent discussion, really good work, guys. I mean, I'm, I'm, we are, we are, you guys are doing a fantastic job. And, and of course, the administrative team and everybody's doing a great job. I think board members, I really appreciate the, the thoughtfulness that you, you're putting into all the work that we're doing. So, great, great job. And so with that, um, would anybody like? Okay, who wants to second that? Candace says second it, okay. And who would like to approve that motion? Signify by saying aye. Great job. Thank you very much.